Okay, so I believe we're ready to call our meeting to order today. So, welcome everyone to the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission meeting for September 16th, 2020. We do have a quorum present today. We have an item of old business, so we'll begin there. This will be a zoning application for approximately 78 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, Wilkinson Pike, and Willow Oak Trail to be rezoned from MU, GDO 1 and GDO 2 to PUD, CH, GDO 1 and GDO 2, Clary Park. Heinz Acquisitions LLC is the applicant. Good afternoon, Ms. Green.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Jones and Planning Commission members. It's good to see you. This item of old business was considered at your previous Planning Commission, September 2nd Planning Commission, at which you've conducted a public hearing. After the Planning Commission conducted the public hearing, you recommended deferral until today's meeting because you're interested in seeing some of the changes discussed during that evening incorporated into the program book. So you should have before you the most recent version of the program book provided to me by the applicants. They were able to get a book to me in the timeframe that you guys requested. Just as a refresher, this is a project that's approximately 78 acres, and the map that you have shows two different proposed zonings on the property. The area shown in each is the Commercial Highway District proposed area. That's approximately 30 acres, well, 30.5 acres, about 39% of the land. And as you recall, we had some, we worked with them to try to get their program book into a point where it wasn't very, so conceptual or market-driven, but a specific plan, and they really struggled with that. So staff proposed that they consider zoning these lots where they really didn't have a fully developed plan to CH Commercial Highway District, and it would remain in Gateway Design Overlay District. So the same type of development that you would see on the opposite side of the street as those commercial out parcels of the avenue would go here. And so they've amended their request to include that. It also includes areas to be zoned PUD, Planned Unit District, and that's where you have the program book for that specific program. I believe the primary driver for plan development on this property is the fact that they want it to do townhomes, 290 townhomes on this property, and the mixed-use development does not permit townhomes as used by right. So to do, the mixed-use development does allow apartments or multifamily and condos by right. So it would allow your traditional vertical mixed-use with commercial and condos together, but it doesn't allow a single-family attached product that we have in our zoning ordinance. So that was really the driver for this application to be zoned plan development, and with that they took some opportunity to add some details to their plan. As I mentioned, the plan proposes 290 townhomes, which is about 56% of the land, and 600 apartments developed in two separate phases, and that's about 25% of the land. And the request for plan development allows you to request exceptions from the zoning ordinance standards, and some of the zoning ordinance standards in the mixed-use district cap the number of dwelling units in this area as 25 dwelling units per acre. So they have requested in areas 5 and 7, which are the two for apartments, to exceed the maximum permitted density allowed in mixed-use, and I separately identified that in the exceptions chart. So Area 5 has 305 dwelling units permitted, and with this plan development, they would be allowed to do an additional 72 dwellings in Area 5. And Area 7 is a total of 295 dwelling units, and this plan development would allow them to do 42 additional units. So that is the difference in density as opposed to bulk zone in the plan development. You may remember we had quite a bit of discussion last meeting about the access and circulation. At the meeting, they were, applicants were very willing, they heard our concerns, I think believed that they would be, they shared those concerns, and were able to modify the program book. So if those dead-end traps or hammerheads that they designed no longer exist, that allowed them opportunity to reorient one of the buildings to face the center street, which is something staff had asked for as well, to reduce the number of rears and sides that face that street. And so now they have included some cross-connections in those alleyways, no need to back all the way down an alley or have those dead-end traps that we discussed before, and that should be shown in the book that you have before you. I'm not sure I could flip to the page quite quick enough. We also talked about the timing of some of the phasing of the work, and we've reviewed that phasing, and I think that as a staff, we're comfortable with that. At that meeting, I did share some of the concerns that we've continually shared with the applicants regarding architecture and design of the buildings. I spent quite a bit of time going through those at our last meeting. Some have been addressed, but not all. So today, I'd just like to take a minute to tell you the ones that are still a concern for Planning Commission, or Planning, not Commission, that's you, Planning Department, and just share with you what the changes were. As you know, at our last meeting, we spent a lot of time discussing porches and how important they are on this project. Because these are alley-loaded, we're into garages that are attached to the house. There's no separate private space courtyard patio that you might see on some townhome, so the front really becomes that space for the residents. And so we, as staff, spent a lot of time emphasizing the importance of the porches, how the design really is important in this area, and wanted to see some of those changes. Something we, the Gateway standards ask for developments to incorporate usable porches, and usable means that example I used with Mr. Blomley being able to sit on the porch in a chair. And so one of the things I've asked for is a minimum depth and width for all the porches that would reasonably accommodate outdoor seating, not anything excessive, but also something that could be able to seat some chairs or something like that. And the applicants are willing to commit to a minimum width on the end units only, but not a minimum depth or larger interior porches. Their plan really has stoops in the interior unit, so each end unit would have a larger porch. Some of those end units might have the wraparound porch, not all. And so we wanted to have them increase the size of the interior units, the stoops into porches, so they could be usable porches, like discussed in the Gateway. And the applicants have not incorporated that into their plan, so that's still something that we think is important. As pointed out during the last meeting, they are still showing a patio or concrete area beside those interior stoops as an extension, I guess, of some outdoor space. Staff has concerns with that. We believe that that is indication that the design isn't sufficient to support the use, so the porch isn't big enough, so you have to build something beside it. I haven't seen any renderings or illustrations that really have encouraged our department to become comfortable with that concept, so I just wanted to point it out to you that that's something that remains an area that we think can be improved. We also discussed elevated porches, and the Gateway asks for a 12-foot foundation on buildings, and we, as this neighborhood is a little different, it's not your typical suburban townhomes, it's designed more as walkable and with some traditional neighborhood design elements. We asked them to really look at making this a special place and elevating those porches. That does a couple of things, it's aesthetics, and also it raises the windows off the ground level, so not everybody on that front yard or that new, that linear park is looking right into the house. The Gateway says 12 inches, but that is based on suburban model, not where you have people walking in front of your houses that are pretty close together. They did offer to increase it from 12 inches to 14 inches, so I did want to point out that they have found a way to propose an increase. We still think they can do a little bit more. In the city of Murfreesboro, our zoning ordinance has an RSA Type 3 townhome, that's an urban townhome, something you find in a walkable neighborhood like downtown Murfreesboro. We have RSA Type 2, which is a suburban townhome that you might find on Compton Road. And so the minimum standards in our zoning ordinance for those urban townhomes is to have a raised foundation of 18 inches, so I thought that would be reasonable. We talked about the wraparound porches. They are being utilized here for the view sheds that are significant views, and I think the applicants have been able to identify those in their program book, those end units that you'll probably see more often, maybe they front along the Willow Oak Trail Extension or the main drives coming in, so they've got a wraparound porch on there. I asked them to consider lengthening that porch, making it a little bit more significant, and they were comfortable with the way it's presented to you, so I did want to point out to you that we did ask for them to make the porches a little bit more proportional to the building, but they're comfortable with what they proposed before. We discussed shutters, and often talk about in the Gateway, the design is in the details. What makes this an elevated area is the details, and that's something that we've asked for. And so in previous versions of the plan, shutters were being shown on the sides and rears and called enhanced elevations, and that remains a part of this plan. So the enhanced elevations on the rears that they believe are visible will receive shutters. The ones that are not identified on their map in the program book are not slated to receive those shutters. And it was my suggestion that shutters were a small thing that could be added to add just to the details and finistration of the units, but I did just want to, since it was discussed, point it out to you. With plan developments in townhomes in the past, the Planning Commission spent quite a bit of time discussing the location of HVACs or utilities, and so we did ask for them to provide an illustration showing the location of them, and that is on page 43. I know since there is no, the garages attached in the back, the opportunities to put these may be on the sides and the front, and so that's something that I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to review and see where you were with that. As we have, as a body, you've spent quite a bit of time talking about the location of these in those very tight urban walkable areas where the location of them can be challenging. Something else that I brought up was the boundary with the Hale property. They are currently undeveloped. Of course, in the future, they likely will be developed, but some of my comments were about how that interface is treated. I wanted to see some details on that boundary, something to keep lights from when they're pulling in the alley, not going directly into the adjacent property, something that would be a little bit more respectful of them. And so they have been able to revise the program book and are offering to put three sections of 40 feet long, six feet tall, white vinyl fence along the property line, which call out a minimum 10-foot Type A buffer. Type A is the smallest buffer we have, Type E is our largest buffer. So I just wanted to mention to you that their proposal is to use a white vinyl fence at basically the ends of those drive aisles to address the headlight issue that I brought up. And so is that something that you're comfortable with? We also talked about parking spaces, and I had suggested some on-street parking as a way to distribute, more evenly distribute parking throughout the development. The development proposed a lot of, and this is mostly for just one area, Area 5, the area proposed most of the parking to the south, and so the units to the north didn't really offer much additional parking. So their plan has been revised to add 13 parallel on-street parking spaces along that stormwater pond that is close to Wilkinson Pike, so they've added them on one side of the street. On that same side of the street, they are proposing some 90-degree parking spaces as well, and of course, 90-degree parking spaces are the ones that you turn and pull in and you pull out as opposed to parallel, which runs along the street. So they've got some additional parking there. You may want to, you may want to see if you believe that the amount of additional parking is sufficient for how you review plans generally. So they have made some of the changes that we've asked for. The access is key, and I appreciate the work that they've done to be able to do that, so we appreciate that work. However, they haven't been able to fully satisfy the concerns that we have, so the Planning Department is unable to recommend approval or support of this rezoning application as it doesn't satisfactorily address the comments and concerns we've shared with the development team throughout the process. I believe that they have some information they'd like to share with you. It's not a public hearing, of course, Chairman, it's up to you, but they have prepared some additional information if you'd like to hear from them.
Okay. Can we ask you a few questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody else have any questions for Margaret Ann before?
Got a couple, I guess, technical. The Wilkinson Lane buffer that we talked about at one time, talk a little more about what that is present day with this application.
Sure. So we currently, the property owner who's looking to sell this property has recorded some restrictive covenants that require that a physical berm and landscaping be installed along the higher property on the east and west side of Gresham Park Drive, which consists of a berm and landscape buffer. And that was in compensation for reducing the Wilkinson Pike buffer that the zoning ordinance requires. The zoning ordinance has a distance of, I think lines up with the GDO 2 line, a distance of 100 feet where you can't put parking, you can't put structures, you can't put anything in. And so the current owner has requested to reduce that, and as a compromise, they are proposing to, or they made a commitment to install that buffer in the next growing season. That's something that I've pointed out that hasn't been done yet, and so those restrictive covenants exist, the city is party to it, but that buffer is not installed. And so, of course, I asked the applicants how that, the portion they're looking at buying, some of the properties still will not be sold to them, but asked them how they would address that buffer, and previous versions of the plan phased it, going in with, I think, two different sections, and I'm trying to turn to the right page, because I think they talked about maybe going ahead and putting the length of it in there since it's been several years since it's supposed to have been installed. Is that anyone? Where's Kevin?
Yeah, it's in there.
Which page?
No, it's on the phasing page.
Phasing page. So the public improvements page is 25, and that talks about the Wilkinson Pike buffer that's on this property, and they're committing to, oh, that's the street, that's actually not the berm. Berm and landscaping plantings installed at Wilkinson Pike with Phase 1 construction. So I've got it on the screen.
So I guess in looking at this, that would be part of Phase 1 construction, an installation of the berm?
That's what they're proposing. So whenever they begin construction, whenever that may be, it would be along, it would be along with that Phase 1 construction.
And I just had one other thing. The white fences that you mentioned, I don't think I have a clear picture of that. Will you help me talk about that a little more?
Yeah. I think it was mostly in writing. I don't, I asked for maybe a cross-section exhibit or something that shows. You can do cross-sections that show that view shed and what it does with the fence and landscaping. So I didn't see in the book where they had a visual that really explained it, but it's just a traditional fence that you see in residential subdivisions. A Type A buffer is 10 feet wide, has some landscaping in it, so they're proposing just to meet that standard and add a fence.
And we talked a little about the lack of a rear courtyard on some of the for sale product, and it not having an enclosed area. If it had an enclosed area, would it be a white vinyl fence?
So it could be. We see that on just regular townhomes. I mean, I think through time, I've asked, this isn't, like I mentioned before, a special place in our town that we've invested a lot of time, a lot of money and efforts in elevating the design for townhomes that you see on Old Fort Parkway, or townhomes you see on Memorial Boulevard in our community. They definitely include a white vinyl fence between the units to give some privacy, and then the rears usually aren't visible. So that is pretty standard on rear patios.
Okay. Thank you.
So for example, like if we're looking at page 27, just because that's the one I could find, kind of showing the whole plan, these white fence buffers would go along?
Sure. Let me.
Like in the flats in that area? Oh, back there. Okay.
Because this is the Hale property.
Okay.
That's undeveloped. And so if you look at those alleys, they're going directly into the Hale property. And generally, when we see that sort of dynamic, we ask them to reduce their impact on the neighbors.
Okay.
So a similar, or an analogy to that, in my view, would be the Walmart on Memorial, when we asked them to put the fences up where the parking was going to be at, I guess, 90 degrees or whatever, that would face Adam's Place.
That's exactly a good example. The Walmart is elevated several feet above the road, and at the end of those drive aisles, the headlights were going to go straight into people's rooms, and so we didn't want to negatively affect the quality of life as much, and so they offered to put just sections of fence up. Some people say that we should have done a solid fence, some people have said that we should do different materials of fence, but the concept is the same.
Right. I was just giving everybody a perspective.
Yeah. Thank you. So can you explain a little bit more for some of us that don't know a lot about construction, the difference in this, if we're talking about a 12-inch versus a 14-inch versus an 18-inch? I think those are the three different numbers I've heard in regards to this elevation that we can't seem to meet in the middle anywhere on, that it, 12-inch versus 14-inch is a huge deal evidently, and then versus 18 inches is an even bigger deal. So if you could help me understand, I'm sure there's some costs involved that matter, but mainly, what is it we need to be concerned about from the look of the project that if we get a 12-inch elevation versus a 14-inch or an 18-inch that you feel, you know, that's, you know, what normally would seem like that's, you know, we're kind of close there, but obviously that's not true. So help me understand that major difference right there.
Sure. So what I'm asking is for a minimum as well, hopeful that various elevations on the property could, like it's not just all 12 or 14 or 18 inches, but we're trying to establish a minimum in this program book. And if you visit any of the developments that have sidewalks really close to the porch, if you go to downtown Murfreesboro or the square, and you walk to the building and you look into the building, I'm thinking about when you raise the foundation, you raise the whole structure, so the bottom of the windows even go up, and by raising the foundation, you have the opportunity to add porches. You have the opportunity to really define what is private and what is available to all the neighborhood, so it has that separation. It helps with safety because it increases the view into the building. If you think of the, I think on Walnut, we have those two single-family homes that were built, you can see they're up on porches, and because of that, you're not looking straight in, all the way through the house. You can see in the window, and you can see some of that front room, but you don't have a straight shot view into that area. It's an indication of high-end design versus maybe typical design. In Murfreesboro, I understand that there are costs associated because we are a fairly flat community, so where you can do it, there are costs associated with it, and that may be the driving factor for the applicant. I'm not quite sure what the resistance to it is, but I would suggest that 18 inches would be the minimum, and then depending on how the topography ends, you could do more, you could do less, but as staff, we've taken some time to visit communities that incorporate these elements, and that is signature in the new developments, as well as in our old parts of town. If you visit any high-dense closed developments, you'll see that those are raised off the lowest adjacent grade. And so it's a distinguisher between like really more high-end and more standard what you would find maybe throughout Murfreesboro.
Okay. So if we think about one of our most recent little Planning Commission tours that we went on, and we went and looked around at the Berry Hill or Berry Farm development?
Sure, yeah, that's right. We went to Berry Farms.
And so some of the little areas that were in more of the town part, and they did have some attached housing down there, right in the little town area, those were much more on-grade, and you maybe stepped up one step to go into some of those. And then as we drove around through there, there were much more changes, even though they were close to the street, you did see that raised elevation in the porch. So that's kind of what we're looking for?
That's what I'm asking you to consider, right. And so, and you're right, when you were near the commercial area in Berry Farms, those were much more at-grade, you had significantly wide sidewalks in front of them and a lot of traffic, so they did have fencing, I think, if I recall, that helped distinguish that because I think throughout the development...
They had little courtyard areas almost around each little entrance. But then I would think that even the ones that we were looking at that were elevated were maybe 24 inches at the moment. I mean, they weren't, it wasn't like a huge change in grade, was it?
Some of them were fairly significant, but I would say three steps, four steps was average. Two steps was on the lower end, three, four steps was average. There were a few, I think, where I counted six steps, but that's, I think, just due to the topography.
And I think the variation is some of what you're looking for there then.
Yes.
Because I think that certainly made a difference, you know, for those of us that, I think we all kind of went on different little, we couldn't all go together in a little bus tour like we used to, but on our individual trips down there, trying to look around and see some of those different types of housing down there was a big help to me. Okay. And then shutters, porches, and patios. So porches and patios, I think, kind of goes along with that elevation we're talking about, and then the shutters were the other thing that you're looking for in the townhome project. Is that correct?
Yes, these are in the townhomes. So we, townhomes aren't something that's permitted by right in the mixed-use district. The mixed-use district is designed and defined for either vertical mixed-use, so commercial first floor condos above, or horizontal mixed-use, where we limit residential to 25%, and then commercial takes up 75% of the master-planned area. That is how we've defined mixed-use development, and we only have a few parcels left. And so with this development, when we, when they wanted to zone the properties for commercial purposes, we suggested CH as opposed to leaving it mixed-use, because mixed-use does allow multifamily by right, so we didn't want to like accidentally allow more condos or apartments in this development, so that's why they've asked for CH. But really, townhomes are not a part of what our vision has been for this area. I think we've all expressed that we're open to that owner, owner, that style where you can own your townhome instead of apartments, and so I think we said, okay, well, even though that's not really what we've visioned for this area, we're open to adding townhomes to this development. And so that's what this is doing, is proposing to add a use here that is not visioned or called for or asked for in the mixed-use district, and the way to do that was with the plan development. I think while they were at it, they just wanted to maybe, and so make some changes in the apartments areas. It is my opinion that really affecting this area, we'll be able to review the site plans for the commercial development, like we have apartments, that really are pretty routine for us, but our ability to really affect change and make this high-end product applies to the townhomes, which is why I've spent a considerable amount of time encouraging and requesting that this be a special place designed different than maybe you see something else in Murfreesboro, and incorporate some of those standards that staff is suggesting really elevate this area and make it different and special.
And you were saying of this project that we're looking at, that the townhomes, as proposed here, are 56% of this property that we're looking at?
Townhomes are 56%, the apartments are 25%, and commercial's 39%.
So the residential portion is including the multifamily and the single-family attached?
Oh, yeah. So that's about 80, 81% for all the residential, or, sorry.
Yeah, we're getting over 100% there somehow.
Yeah, we are.
Getting close. Okay. All right. Just trying to see where we are. Any other questions for Margaret Ann or staff before we have the developers come forward? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Mr. O'Shea.
Hello. Good afternoon, Ms. Jones. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come back before you and discuss Clary Park some more. We've gone ahead and wanted to ask the Chair if it's okay. Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Walter O'Shea with Heinz. We are the applicant for Clary Park. Just wondering, we printed out, handout copies or hard copies of the material that I wanted to review. We're going back and forth between pages, it might be helpful to, for the commission's review if we were to pass that out, if that's okay.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess just to start off, I wanted to really kind of echo some of the comments from Margaret Ann. We've worked very closely with staff over the last, really, I guess it's now seven, eight, nine months on the overall planning of Clary Park. We, what we do as a firm is really look to create projects that we feel are, set the standard for excellence in the markets we work in. Here in the Nashville area, we feel like we did that with the development of Cool Springs that we developed in the 90s. That was a thousand-acre project and really created a, you know, a new benchmark for quality mixed-use land development in central Tennessee. We did that most recently with a building we completed in downtown Nashville, 222 Second Avenue. It's, it's recently just sold for a record price, which I think, which I think, you know, is a testament to the quality of the execution. We were founded, you know, back 60 years ago by Gerald Heinz and his mantra has always been quality architecture, quality planning, quality engineering, quality management will bring forth better real estate values and leave leg, legal, leave a legacy for us and the communities within which we work. That's the way we approach every project. That's our commitment to you as it relates to the quality of execution for Clary Park. I've been with Heinz now for 24 years. I have developed land development projects exceeding 3,000 acres and over 3,500 residential units. And every one of those projects, we put the same level of commitment to quality and execution and detailed planning and architecture that we will put to Clary Park. I just want to kind of give a little intro background. So I'll run through some of this stuff quickly. I do think in, in hearing some feedback from commission members, it probably makes sense to take a little time to help explain some of the vision and some of the planning steps we've gone through to get to where we are today. I know it's all there in plans, but sometimes it's a little bit easier for someone to maybe show you in detail what the why and the how of where we are and how that will ultimately look for the community. So I'll do a little bit of that as well. First, wanted to just share, and we just kind of went through a brain dump of, of a lot of the things that we've worked on with staff to make modifications and changes and accommodations. And, you know, I won't run through this list. It's several pages long of the various iterations of the plan book that we've worked on, the first couple pages. But I will point out that as we make considerations of putting in additional public improvements, limiting with types of development, putting restrictions on the kind of development that we're doing, that we're doing, all of those are economic considerations that have real impact to us and to our builder partner and to the landowner. So not only have we made these accommodations, we've made financial adjustments to, to, to our expectations for the project to be able to provide these things for the city. So just want to let you know that we've done, we feel like we've done everything we can to get to the point where we are today. So starting with the master plan, I know, and I'll focus obviously on the town home development because obviously we've got three or four or five open items on the town homes that I want to address specifically. When we design a project like this, to us, one of the most important things is the entry processional. What is it that residents and buyers are going to experience as they enter into the project? And we really work on the site plan to make that a special place. And I show you that in all of our projects, but, you know, I'll show you that here in Clary Park where we've really focused on that. So first, the entrance coming in off of Medical Center Parkway right across from the avenue. Obviously, this entry into the avenue is a special place in the city. It's beautifully done. It's beautifully executed. We want to respect that and build upon that. So as you enter Clary Park across the street, that same landscape elements on either side, landscape median, that incredible experience that you have going into the avenue will be replicated. Any of the commercial parcels that are on either side, access to those commercial parcels will come in off of the road and behind. So that entry experience of landscape is not disrupted by curb cuts into commercial parcels. And then at the end of that driveway in, you'll come to really the central lawn, which is the, one of the key architectural features within Clary Park. We've got some images way in the back of the, of the pattern book that show that. We've done some three-dimensional renderings. It's going to be a very dynamic, socially programmed outdoor space unlike anything that really exists in Murfreesboro today. And that will be flanked by architecturally significant, the first phase of the multifamily that, that Heinz, that we will be self-developing that. So we'll be controlling 100% of the architecture of that product. And again, we've given you some good renderings of how that looks. So that's one extremely important entry processional for us. When looking over at the residential areas, what I wanted to point out is where we abut any, any public roadways, we've designed the project so that, looking here on Robert Rose, all of these units that are fronting on Robert Rose, that's the front of all those units. So we want to put our best foot forward, have the architectural elevations of the exterior of those buildings along Robert, along Robert Rose all front outward for the project. Similar thing that we've done along Clary Lane. We've brought the front of all those buildings right up to the edge of Clary Lane so that there's this incredible experience of having office space on the ground floor. You walk out into a linear park that ties the whole community together. And again, the architecture of that building makes the statement. There's not parking in front of you and then the building is hidden in the back. When we come over into the Garden District, which is really kind of what we're talking about in terms of the open issues, I guess what I'd like to do to kind of walk through that is go to the little more detailed plans that, that we've done. So first, in terms of the, the overall conceptual plan and why the Garden District is located here, and, and this is turned sideways, so I just want to orient you. Willow Oak is over on this side of the project. So this, as you come down Willow Oak, Medical Center Parkway would be down off the lower right. And on the left-hand side of the page, this is Wilkinson Pike. So, and, and, and so that's to the north. So to the north is to the left. We've turned this 90 degrees to be able to provide more detail. When we went out and walked the site, which of course we always do when we first get involved with planning a project, I mean, one thing struck, struck us significantly was that there's beautiful existing tree lines that frame either side of this part of the property. There's a very dense tree line along the Hale property and there's a very dense tree line here between the edge of this portion of the residential and where we will put some commercial. So what we decided to create was a residential district that was focused on pedestrian access, had great park spaces, linear parks that link all of those park spaces together and this preserved the beautiful tree lines on either side and hence the concept of the Garden District. So that, that's kind of the overall vision of what we wanted to create here. And then as we start looking at how do we place units, how do we place the town homes within the community, we want to make sure that that processional for the buyer coming in, we're putting our best foot forward in all, in all those situations. So what I'll do is I'll go to the next page, which comes to that, the concept of where we enhance the rear and the side of units in addition to what the base architecture is. So this is the locations where we're providing enhanced architecture on, on the next page. So I'll walk you through the entry processional coming in both ways so you understand or try to get a vision for how that will look and feel. So again, over to the right, this is the entrance coming in off of Willow Oak. You'll come in off of Willow Oak. Again, we, we are planning to gate both, both, both entry points of this. We feel that with the price point we're trying to hit, that the security and safety provided like by that is, is essential to be able to get to that higher quality price point that we want to get to and that the staff wants us to get to. So all of these units, you have 13 units on this side of the project, on the south side that face Willow Oak. On the corner units where someone might be driving either this way or coming down towards Medical Center Parkway, we've included a wrap porch element on the corner units, which are highlighted in green so that it makes an additional architectural statement in addition to just kind of the typical side elevation, which I'll, which I'll show you in a second. And then as you continue in, what you see is then facing you is another five-unit building. So again, you have, you have your eyes then drawn to the front of this buildings with a park space in front of it. And as you turn the corner, we again have highlighted a unit here with a, with a wrap porch element. So it provides a nicer architectural feature as people make that processional through the project. Where we have these, these units on the left-hand side and we have a side elevation, again, we provided an enhanced side elevation that is represented by the yellow along any units that are along this curve area because we felt that because it's on a curve, portions of the side of the building is going to be more exposed than it otherwise would if you had buildings that were immediately next to one another. The curve opens up the side of these buildings and the linear park connection through here opens up the side of those buildings. So we provided for enhanced elevation. As you continue along, again, as Margaret Ann noted, we were able to turn this building 90 degrees. So we have again another, another park space and, and the front of the unit facing the main roadway. We then have three buildings that we have the side of the units facing the main roadway. Each of those buildings, we've provided for that enhanced elevation with the wrap porch so that again, the, the eye of the, of the person coming into the community is drawn to that wrap porch element. And I'll show you what these look like in a second. And what the red line indicates is that indicates an enhanced rear elevation. Obviously, as you're coming along the road here, this rear elevation of this unit will be exposed. And so we want to make sure that that rear elevation is enhanced. And we've done the same thing for all three of these because, you know, we, we feel like there's going to be visibility from the main road into the rear of those buildings. And so actually, this red line is on the wrong side. I apologize. There should be a red line right here, which is the rear. This is obviously the front of these buildings. Both of these buildings front on a park space, which is pretty much the common theme of what we've tried to do is get the front of all these units onto park spaces. So that's kind of the processional that we've taken coming in from Willow Oak. If we do really the same exercise coming in off of Wilkinson Pike, you have 11 units that front on Wilkinson Pike. So of the total 160 units we're planning, there's only 24 units that actually front on public roadway. And it's obviously, again, the front of all those units. Both the corner units have the wrap porch element so that drivers coming from either direction will have that in, you know, view of the enhanced architecture. And then as you come into the property, what we've done is we've turned this building so that it's facing people coming into the, into the community rather than having those buildings along the, along the, the edge of the road where the side of that unit would be facing. We've turned this unit 90 degrees or this set of units 90 degrees so they're fronting on a large park space with the building fronting the processional for guests and residents coming in. And same with these units at the far end of the park, again, you have a park space that on three sides is wrapped by the front of units. Because of these units, we'll be looking at the back of the units over here as well as they would be visible on the exit, we've provided an enhanced rear elevation along these units in this location. And then as you proceed along the main roadway, again, where we've got corner units or end units that are highly visible, we've provided the enhanced elevation. So really where we don't have the enhanced elevation is pretty much where you have two units, side, two buildings side by side that are 10 feet apart where there's not a pedestrian circulation provided between the units. At that point, really the only difference is we're not putting shutters on the sides of those units and we feel like that's a little bit of overkill. So I'll move next to talk a little bit about, I guess I'll hit on parking quickly. I know it was, it was a question that was asked in the last meeting. So we went ahead and did the parking count based on code. Within this area, this is based on 159 units, there are three-bedroom and two-bedroom units. Per code, each bedroom requires 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom. So you do the math and you carry it out and you come out with 458 spaces that are required per code. What we are providing is where we have the three-bedroom units, we're providing two driveway spaces. The two-bedroom units, we're providing two driveway spaces and then we're providing 40 guest spaces. Then in addition to, that's on the outside of the units. Then we have garages that are provided with each of the units. The three-bedroom has a two-car garage. The two-bedroom has a one-car garage. So those are the interior garage spaces. So you total all that up and we come up with 614 spaces. So we're providing about 34% more parking than is required by code. We feel like we've got parking covered. We obviously don't want to underpark the community. We're not going to sell units in there and sell them at a significant premium to the marketplace. So I think we feel comfortable, our builder feels comfortable, we've satisfied the parking So I'll kind of move on to talk about the, the four specific items that, that are, that are open issues that Margaret Ann highlighted. You know, as I noted, we've worked diligently with, with the city staff and the Reagan Smith team to try to address all the concerns the city has, has raised. We're down to four issues that we can't seem to find common ground on unfortunately. We feel that the design that we have presented, and I'll show you why, it greatly exceeds the standards that are presented within the GDO guidelines. It greatly exceeds any architectural treatment that's been provided, frankly, even within higher-end residential communities within Murfreesboro. And I'll show you some examples of why we feel that way. In terms of code compliance, the PD regulations say that we need to provide architectural renderings, plans, photographs with sufficient clarity to convey the appearance of the proposed structures and provide a written description. We feel like we've met that legal standard very sufficiently. We've been asked about pricing of units and I'll, I'll show you some graphs to, to further demonstrate this in a minute, but we're looking at pricing that ranges, you know, obviously the, depending on where a unit is, it can be some with premiums, some without, but we're looking on the smaller units that being at about $285,000 and the larger units being over 300, about 310. That works out to ranging between $170 to $190 a square foot. That is a more than 20% premium to what's in the marketplace and we've got some more data to show you that. We took a very unusual approach here, given the city's statements to us early on about concerns about architecture. Normally what we do is we engage a builder that we're going to sell lots to, they design the product and they give us their architecture back to make comments on. We knew the city's concerns about this area. We took the unusual approach of we hired an architect directly that we've worked with many times before, one of the top residential design architects in the country. Her name's Daryl Patterson. We asked Daryl to design product for us that would be special. And the designs that you see today come from Daryl. We then provided that to our partners at David Weekly. They looked at it, we provided some comments and we collectively agreed that this was the way we could put our best foot forward. We wanted to impress you. We wanted to make sure that we were living up to our guideline or our guidance of, of providing the best product we can in the communities we develop. So moving on to the details of the, of the four open issues. So front porches versus front patios. What we have proposed is that where you have a building, on the corners of the building, you will generally, you will have a, a porch element that is large enough for people to sit. I know Margaret Ann was a little confused on the dimensions. I think we talked about it last time. We've clarified with staff. We will provide a minimum depth, which means from the face of the house to the front of the porch of six feet. So it will pass the, the Blomley test of being able to sit and stretch his legs out. So that's what's provided for in the plan book. It says a minimum six-foot depth that gives people the room to be able to sit. On the interior units, we do not recommend providing porches on the interior units and it really has to do with the livability of those units. If you recall, this is a rear-loaded town home product. So the back of the unit is going to be garage. On the first floor therefore, and the sides of the units are obviously walls that abut other units. The only way to get natural light into the ground floor is through the windows on the front of the unit. If you provide a porch that blocks the natural light into those windows, you make a very dark interior for that first floor unit and a very poor living space for the people that are there. So we generally don't put porches on the interior units on, on the front of town homes. What we, what we have used before in the past and used it very successfully and we think it's a great element and actually, and I promoted, you know, a quote from an article where you're seeing people going back and I'm one of those people. I went back to my 1990s-era house and I've added a front patio so my wife and I can sit outside and add her chairs and interact with our neighbors, which is really what this movement is all about. Margaret Ann referenced traditional neighborhood design. Really the core concept here is getting people to live to the front of the house, live to front porches, live to front patios and interact with their neighbors to create that sense of community. So that's what this element is looking to achieve. So what we're proposing on the interior units is to provide an exterior patio so that you still have the natural light coming into the house and provide that seating area that addresses the comment space. Obviously, the details of that will be worked out infinitely when we get to the site plan process and we can provide landscaping and all of those details, but there is a very detailed site plan process we still have to go to. We are confident we'll be able to, you know, provide patios that, that more than adequately meet the Blomley test and also, you know, provide that interaction between the public and private space. So that's, that's kind of one issue we would, you know, we would ask for you to consider. We feel like... We feel like we're going in the wrong direction adding porches on those interior units. I know you talked a little bit about the rise of, of the slab. And so, so what this issue is, just to make sure you're clear, that what this, this is the dimension, if you're looking at the front of the house, looking at the ground that abuts the foundation at the front of the house, what is the dimension from the ground to the finished floor on the interior? Again, as Margaret Ann noted, the code says a minimum of 12 inches. So obviously, we've met code. We've met the legal standard. What we've proposed is 14 inches. And the reason why the 14 inches to 18 inches is an issue is cost. So I'll go into a little bit of detail here, but I feel like it's warranted. Building code requires in Tennessee, you, you go down 18 inches so that your footers are, you go down 18 inches below grade, so your footers, footers are below the frost line. And then what we're talking about is building up above that another 14 inches. So you've got a total of 32 inches. The typical way for a builder to do a slab is to do the slab and those footers that, the sidewall, the slab in one, in one pore. And they have forms and technology that allows them to do that. When you go above the 32 inches, you then move to a different style of foundation construction. You actually have to do a little block stem wall. So it's much more labor intensive and much more expensive to move from that 14 inches to 18 inches because of the requirement of the change in the foundation system that, that the builder has to do. I was talking with our partners with Weekly and they priced us out on another project and they, they came up with about $1,000 an inch when you start raising that up above the 14 inches. We feel that the 14 inches provides the two steps up, what we've done in, in other communities, we always want to have two steps up from the lawn up onto the front porch because we feel that provides the grade transition, creates some elegance. You know, whether you're 18 or 14 inches up, the view into the windows is really not going to be substantially different from a privacy standpoint. But it's nice to have that porch elevated a little bit. We feel like the 14 inches meets that standard. And really above that, we're adding costs to the buyer, but frankly, the buyer doesn't want to pay for. You know, if we went to any homeowner and said, hey, we've got a great idea for you, you can either have, you know, wood floors instead of carpet in your entire first floor because that's going to cost $4,000 or $5,000, or we can raise your house up by four inches, which would you prefer? 99.9% are going to say, I'll take the wood floor. We really just don't see it as something that the buyers are willing to pay an additional premium for. And as we noted before, and I'll show you in a second, we're already way above market on pricing. So that's kind of where our head is on the, on the 14 inches and why it is a, a material issue for us. It's not just being belligerent, we really have facts behind it. The enhanced side elevations, so we talked about two types of side elevations, or really three. One has a wrap porch, so that's the highest level. The second has shutters, that's the next step down. Those are the two enhanced. But what I want to focus on is in addition to those elements, the side elevations that we're providing, again, are way above market. And these are, these are the detail elements that are going into those standard side elevations. You have a brick or stone water table along the entire side. You have windows that vary in size and placement. The term is called fenestration, but it provides an interesting architectural character. Where the first floor and second floor vary from one another, you have horizontal trim, so it provides a break rather than just one continuous wall of, of a standard siding element. We have changes in materials and colors that mirror the front elevations. Some of the sides have gable elements with trusses and corbels built into those gable elements, and then louvers at the, at the attic level. And again, in a minute, I'll show you the, the details of what that looks like once, you know, with the proposed design we have. And then finally, onto the rear elevations. We've again, provided a rear elevation that we feel frankly is better than some front elevations of townhomes unseen. It's a beautifully designed rear elevation, and, and what we've proposed is that all, on all buildings, the corner units, which will be the most visible, will have shutters on the windows on the rear elevations. The interior units will not have shutters unless it's an enhanced elevation location. So in those places where there's a lot of, of view into the back of the unit from the main roadway, we're providing that. When it's in the interior of the project, that would not be visible. And here's the elements that we've included. Brick or stone water table, shed roof over the garage, two middle units, roof dormers, again, that horizontal trim that demarcates the first and second floor, changes in colors and material, and gable elements with corbels and trusses. So I'll kind of walk, go through the architecture a little bit. On the front elevations, we've provided three styles of architecture. We don't like having monotony in our community. We think architectural variety provides a community that lives better and that stands the test of time rather than all of the, the buildings being monotonous and the same. So we've designed three separate elevations that will be intermixed throughout the community. All, you know, architecturally appropriate to the context of Middle Tennessee, the Southern Traditional, where you have mixing in some shed roofs that are metal. You have obviously brick elements that are raised that are, including on the whole first floor. As I noted, the corner units have the full porches. One corner unit has a double decker full porch on the front. These, these units would allow for wrap porches around the corner, so this is one unit type where we could do a wrap porch. In the center units, you have a covered portico, which means people can walk in, get out from under the rain and not be waiting there. Your packages won't be sitting and getting wet. And then this is where we would provide in front of these windows for either the interior units, where we would provide the exterior patio. We would still meet all the landscaping requirements of the code, there's got to be foundation plantings, none of that. I'm not proposing any modifications or exceptions to that. There will just be a nice patio area that will be detailed out when we get to the, the site plan process.
Is, are the patios contiguous with the portico, or are you going to step down on to stepping stones to get to the patio? How's that going to work?
Yeah, I think you would step down.
Okay.
To the patio. You would step down, so the patio would be at grade. You would take the two steps down from the portico and then the patio would be right in this location.
I'm with you.
Yeah. Farmhouse style, this is the one style where it's, it's largely symmetric. Again, we like architectural interest. We think that providing a, a, a building that has units that have, each unit has an individual architecture like in the Southern Traditional. Southern Traditional provides a lot of interest. In the farmhouse, this, this is a little more symmetrical, where you have porches again on the end units, the portico in the middle, brick brought up to the, the full height of the first floor on the interior units, dormers on the roof, obviously shutters at the appropriate locations, trusses in the gables, all the architectural elements that we think are appropriate to a farmhouse style architecture. And then the final is craftsman. And craftsmen like the Southern Traditional, each of the four units has a little bit of a different architectural feel. Corner unit over here has the porch element on the front that will have the, the depth for the sitting area, and it has the ability to do a wrap porch. This center unit has a front gable, double, double gable with corbels. You've got a full height brick, I mean, full height stone product on the third unit with a dormer roof. And then the fourth unit, again, has the porch in the front with a gable element. We're extremely pleased with the architecture. So wanted to talk a little bit through the side elevations. This is the enhanced side elevation with a wrap porch. And then the next one is the enhanced side elevation that does not have the wrap porch. And you'll see a lot of those elements I talked about. Here's the wrap porch coming around, the brick or stone water table that runs the entire length, shutters on the enhanced elevation. Here you've got the trim that divides the first and second floor. On the, this is the craftsman elevation, which is a gable side. So here you've got a gable element, again, with the trim dividing the second floor from the roof area. Got a change in materials, you have corbels, you have louvers, shutters, stone water table, and, and very nice fenestration in terms of the variation of the window types and spacing. Now, the only thing that would be different on the interior units where you're not in a, in a high visibility location is the shutters will not be provided on this elevation. We just don't think it's necessary. And then finally, onto the rears. This is a standard rear elevation. You'll note that the garage doors have, have hardware on them to kind of give them the look of a carriage door, forgot to mention that. Got gable ends with changes in color, corbels, trusses, shutters on the end units in all, a shed roof over the center garage doors, dormers at the roof level. And again, where we have the high visibility rears, we will provide shutters on the interior units. Where it's a low visibility rear, we will not, we will not provide shutters on the interior windows.
So another question.
Sure.
Help us, remind us where the AC units are going to be.
Yeah, we'll need to go to, well...
If you're going to get to it, don't worry about it.
Yeah, you can see a little bit on the enhanced rear elevation. So these two locations here for the interior units, we've designed a recess into the building footprint to be able to accommodate the AC unit. So it's kind of back in, into the, into the recess that will be, you know, built into part of the home. On the corner units, the HVAC units will be on the side of the buildings.
Okay.
On the edges. So we feel like we've got that well handled. And I can, I can show you the plan a little bit later.
Okay.
So here's kind of just pricing. On the left is Clary Park, and we've got the 22 foot unit, which is, this is a price per square foot comparison. So the left hand graph is price per square foot that, that we're proposing where these units will be priced. Going across is, you know, a number of other townhome communities and residential communities. Here Shelton Square, which is pricing at around $140 a square foot on average. Obviously, there's some variation in there. You know, we're, we're looking at being in the $170 to $190 a square foot range on this product, based on, you know, the quality of what we're looking to do here. And this is kind of showing a more detailed graph. This is a typical thing that the builders and we use to position product relative to the marketplace. This is sales over the last year, so from July 2019 to August 2020. This is from Metro Study. It's a, it's a database, data source that, that takes all of the sales, sales data and compiles it. These are townhomes in Murfreesboro during that period. And on the left hand graph is the sales price, the left hand index. And then going across the bottom is the square footage of the units. And so what you end up getting is kind of like a, a, a line that shows where the majority of units are being built and so, on a price per square foot basis. And what we've done is then we've overlaid where the Clary Park product is. So as you can see, when you're looking on a price per square foot basis for units that are on a comparable size to the ones we're proposing in Clary Park, here's where the market is today. It's clustered really in this $220,000 range, whereas, you know, we're looking at being in the 290 to over $300,000 range for units that are of this, this size, the square footage, around 1,500 to 1,700 square feet. I wanted to just kind of compare and contrast a little bit the elevations both front and sides and rears to maybe a lesser degree, but really front and sides to some of the other projects that are out there. And I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, I know, I know I've taken up much time up here, but maybe it would be good because I feel like anyway, that Shelton Square is a very nicely executed community. It's, it's the highest end community for single family homes that are being sold in Murfreesboro today. And it actually has some homes that are alley loaded, and so you kind of have a similar look and feel to what we're going to be doing with the townhomes here. So in comparing the front elevations in Shelton Square to what we're proposing, they have no wrap porches, we are proposing wrap porches. Their water table is less than 18 inches, so if you look at the water table that they're providing along the front and the sides, it's maybe about 18 inches high, but we would normally propose to bring that all the way up to the bottom of the window. There's, there's, you know, there's not as much variation in color or material product in the fronts, and the change in grade at the front is 12 inches or less. I was able to look at, you know, this plan here, you can see here, there's kind of one step going up, and you can almost see the, you know, the, the ground elevation coming almost even with the bottom of the porch in this location. And this again, is one of the townhome products that we're looking at, one of the single family homes that are alley loaded here. You know, you know, this house is nicely kind of designed, I think it's a good looking house. But when we look at, again, the, the expense that we're going through where we've got variations in material color, we've got the stone water table all along the front up to the bottom of the windows. We have shutters, obviously, these, these windows are too close together for the shutters. So we feel like we're providing a product on the front elevations that's at par or better than what's in Shelton Square. And I think really where it jumps out is when you look at the side elevations and, and kind of going back to that processional. This is the main entry coming in off of Blackman. They've got a nicely landscaped boulevard. The first house you come to on the left, this is the side elevation of that house. And, you know, I asked you to kind of contrast that to the side elevations I just walked you through. There's, you know, no water table, no demarcation of trim, the gable element, there's no treatment to the gable element, there's no corbels, there's no trusses, there's no shutters. So again, we, we feel like we're providing a product that, that will be, set the new standard for excellence in Murfreesboro. I will go through kind of the rest of these, it's, it's more of the same. A lot of these are older townhome communities that were developed, some that are in the gateway. Like this project here, the one that Indian Creek is in the gateway. I understand it's an older, older project that started maybe 2009 or before. But here's kind of what, you know, what that product looks like. And you've got the packages in front if you want to read the details. I think, I think that kind of summarized, oh, I, I know we've talked about, about patios and, and front porches and I, I don't know if people are able to kind of visualize, so I just quickly went on Google and searched, you know, front patio and grabbed a couple images that popped right up, just to kind of get an idea of, okay, how could that front patio look relative to, to some of these houses? And again, this will be something that will be detailed at the site plan level, but this gives you an idea of, of how people are using those front patios, a lot of Idarondack chairs. This one's probably most similar to what we would probably do because here you've got the porch that's elevated a little bit higher, steps down to grade, the patio off to the side, landscaping still in front of the house that meets the, the code or above, additional landscaping between the patio and the edge of the street, and then you've got your sidewalk that's your public walkway. That's kind of a good example. And I think what we'll see is we'll also see people then upgrade that. You know, here's an example of someone taking that front patio and putting a seat wall on here, and obviously, this will be something the builder would offer. People will look at this and say, hey, this is a great space, what can we do with this to make it a little bit more dynamic? So here's an example of someone putting in a seat wall, an example of someone putting in a trellis, as to how these, these, these front porch spaces could be really, really made special over time. I guess I'll leave with a couple images of some of the, I, I started out by giving you my assurance about the architectural quality of what it is we do as a firm. I just wanted to share with you some of the communities that I've personally led the development of, and these, these are the, these are the amenity centers that we've designed where I was personally responsible for supervising the architecture. I feel like I've had a lot of training working with some of the best architects in the world and feel like the product that we've designed is on par with the quality of architecture in the highest end communities that I've developed within Heinz. And these are, these are some examples of that architectural and landscaping execution that we are known for. And these are two projects that happen to be in St. Augustine, Palencia, which is a 2,500 acre master plan community, St. Augustine themed architecture, and Markland, which is a 350 units, unit, single family home community with a Greek revival amenity facility. I know I've talked on a lot, I appreciate your patience with all the information that we've provided. Happy to answer any questions or make any clarifications.
I have a couple of questions. Will the patio have any minimum requirements to it?
Well, it would, I mean, we'd happily say it would have the minimum six feet. I mean, it's going to be a minimum of at least six feet deep, and they'll probably be, you know, I would guess six to eight feet wide on average.
I think, I will comment on the patio in general. I, I think the patio works if there's a size requirement and the appropriate amount of landscaping on the front side is there because in walking similar communities, the thing that I noticed in certain situations were signs saying, private property, keep off, which indicates they feel like they have to put that out there because somebody walking along this walkable neighborhood decides to have a seat in their front yard. So, I mean, that indicates that it, that they obviously face that challenge. So the ones with better landscaping or even the small fence.
Fence area, yeah.
Would help prohibit that. But I, I, for me, I do think I'm comfortable with the patio.
I think when we bring this back in front of this board, you know, for final site design review, all of those details will be provided with the landscaping. We'll be able to select landscape materials, what hedge materials are appropriate. It's hard to get into that detailed level of planning, you know, at this stage of, of kind of a rezoning process when you're looking at a site that's this large. of a rezoning process, when you're looking at a site that's this large.
Where on the rear elevations, could you be more specific about the trash receptacles? Because that's another area I've noticed in existing situations. It gets really tight.
Yeah.
And they've got trash and recycle bins, and they can sometimes...
Those would be required to be kept inside the garage.
In the garage.
Yeah. And, you know, only put out, you know, during the time. And we, in all of our communities, we have homeowners' associations, obviously. We have covenants that we enforce. And the property management company, you know, regularly does inspections, and if there are someone leaving trash, receptacles out, you know, they send them a letter, give them a call. Again, we've, obviously, it's a standard thing that you do in a planned community is have homeowners' associations that then can enforce all the covenants. So those would be kept inside the garage.
Okay. And then I think, I've got a lot of other comments. I'll probably hold for just, after everybody finishes asking you specific questions. But on the parking...
Yes.
I'm happy to see the numbers are much higher, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. So you have the 458 required parking spaces...
Right.
And providing 614 between street and garage.
Correct.
And then in one of the summaries for exceptions, I thought I read there was a specific exception to parking being asked for. Is that...
Yeah, it had to do with where we're having, the multifamily is where we provided kind of numbers on the parking, because we felt like we were, so that's in a different section of the code.
That's not to this in here.
Not here, no. There's no exception requested here. We're meeting, we're obviously exceeding the code by 30-plus percent.
Right. And my comment here, I love the additional guest parking that you've shown here.
Right.
I think that is a must, because these do, they get very tight, and people have parties and birthday parties and whatever.
Sure.
But when you talk about the, that front entrance experience on the plan right side here, and you pull in...
Right.
You suddenly, to me, just seeing, the majority of your parking is right there up at the front, and that takes away a little bit from the, what you were kind of describing as the first experience as you arrive. You know, if there was a way to distribute that in the areas that don't have it...
Mm-hmm.
That would be my, I feel like that would better the site plan a little bit, just for the rear side of the...
Right.
Or the opposite side of the development that doesn't have that.
Yeah, we've got, we added kind of this street parking, you know, and then parking in front of the amenity center, you know, on kind of the north end to provide, you know, guest parking. So we've got some on the south end and some on the north end. I mean, we've got to put it somewhere, you know, and it needs to be obviously on the main road. You know, there will be landscaped islands and landscaping around the parking to kind of diffuse it.
Okay. So far, those are my questions.
I'm looking at that page 38, what I guess we're...
Yes.
Yes, seeing on our screen up there. I do like the enhanced side with the wrap porch. I think that those do look very nice, and that is, of course, the rendering that we're seeing in the book. That is on nine units out of this 290. So I do think there's a lot more opportunity to provide those enhanced, the side with the wrap porch. I definitely think along both of the Willow Oak and, is it, whatever the two main, I know we've got it turned one way or the other, yes?
This is Willow Oak, I mean, this is Wilkinson Pike on the left, and Willow Oak is here.
Willow Oak. I definitely think all of those end units, and I realize that could mean that you might lose one unit in a building here and there, I'm not sure. But I think...
Yeah, it'll be tight.
I don't think putting the nine units is, I mean, I think, I think you can certainly put a lot more and really bring up the quality of this development along the, even that main road through the middle, where you just, again, in the enhanced side elevations, they're on 10 units in the whole project. So, a lot more opportunities for the enhanced side elevations as well. And, you know, I really only see the interior back, maybe six or eight or 10 buildings, just kind of in that very middle, yes, area, where you might get away with not having as many of those in those areas, but the rest of those out on those main, I think there ought to be as many enhanced elevations on the end units as you can get in there, even if it means leaving out a unit or two.
Yeah. I guess the one consideration I'll ask is, when you've got a unit that's facing the roadway, you're really not going to see the side porch. You know, what we've done is we've put them on the ends, the wrap porch, where someone is going to, where it's exposed to traffic. But like in between these two units, as someone's driving by, the wrap porch is going back along the side of the building, it really won't be visible from the front. You really won't even know that it's there. All you'll just see is the front porch and then be driving by.
It might if that, if that first unit grouping was four units instead of five, it might allow the opportunity to see more of the enhanced side elevations that you could put in there.
Yeah.
I'm sure I'll have more, but who's next?
I guess I would, you know, just ask for consideration of the...
I'll make a comment. I do think you, if you go back to that same plan...
Okay.
I mean, I think it's clear where there are the true corner where you're going to drive by it. It's been addressed. And I will also comment that, you know, your side elevations, they do have, I'll agree, they do have some extras already to them. I think your water table, your higher water table makes a huge difference, and the certain trim details make a big difference as well. And just the change in overall fenestration did remind me, I had one more question on the different types of elevation designs. Those all have interchangeable color patterns within them? If you see one, is it not always the same colorway? It's mixing it up some?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be, once, you know, once they get into kind of final design, there'll be some, we've showed, you know, I think a color palette that's reflective of it, there may be some variations. But even if we just built that color palette, again, you're going to have multiple buildings. So you're not going to have two buildings across or next to each other that look exactly the same, because with the three different types of product, we can mix that up. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to say we're going to have other colors and then have Margaret Ann say I need to provide more color boards. So, you know, we're, what we have, we like. We would love to be able to do a little bit more variation when we get into it, but I'll leave that to final site design rather than creating another open issue right now.
Because every single side elevation has the stone water, the water tables higher, correct?
That's correct, yeah. I mean, what I...
Some of these in-between are just...
Correct. The only difference on the, on the non-enhanced side elevation is just not having the shutters. So this whole side elevation is what you'd see throughout the community without shutters on these three windows.
Okay.
The water table, you know, the breakup between the things, the gable on the side, the louvers, the corbels, you know, all of those elements are part of the standard. Again, that's, to me, those are, even on multimillion-dollar homes that we see developed, we often don't see this level of detail on the side of, I think this is outstanding.
Do you have other comments or questions? And the one thing I do want to make sure is, we're spending an awful lot of time on the townhomes, and as we talk about this, we are talking about this entire book today. So if you have any questions anywhere else throughout the book, on any of the other areas or anything like that, I want to make sure we're touching everything that needs to be addressed one way or the other, however this moves forward. Who else has questions or comments?
I'll make an additional comment. I do want, I can tell just in the presentations I've seen you make, Mr. O'Shea, the pride that you take in the product of what you do, and so I certainly appreciate that. I don't want, I don't want you to think that that's been lost on some of the work that staff has tried to do to work through this process. I think, you know, my perspective would be, as you well know now, the gateway is a very special thing to us in Murfreesboro. I think I really appreciate, you know, Margaret Ann doing her part to protect the vision of that and to keep it, you know, the way we have wanted to keep it.
Sure.
But I do also think, you know, there was not a design for townhouses in the gateway when we started this process. And so I'm very excited about that. I don't know that I have the technical expertise in architecture or construction, for that matter, to have a heavy comment on 12 inches versus 14 versus 18. You know, I can see holding a standard. I can also see four inches not making the difference in being able to view inside, you know, a home. But I just make a comment that I really appreciate what Margaret Ann has done, but I also want you to know that what you're trying to show us is not lost, certainly on me. So, just a general comment.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
I would agree with Mr. Martin's comments. What's really helped me, just to be quite honest with you, is the, kind of the pictures with respects to Shelton Square that you've given us in the side elevations. My daughter has just purchased a house in that subdivision, so I'm in there quite a bit. And to be quite honest with you, I think it's one of the, you know, the better developments that we've seen. Of course, it's not fully developed, but just the, the whole viewscape of how you drive down the street, how you walk the sidewalks. It's got one of the best view sheds that I've seen in a long time. Now, a lot of it has to do with landscaping. I'll be quite honest with you. But a lot of it has to do with the way the porches are put together. Some of the houses have porches on the second floor, which you've kind of got that element in one of your, I guess, the farmhouse one. So, you know, I think that I can live with some of these things that maybe you're, that we haven't agreed upon, based upon how that subdivision looks and how well it's been done so far, I guess is the best way to say it.
And as I've said, I mean, I, I know that because the details that I'm kind of pointing out with some of the things with Shelton Square, I mean, those are the level of details that we look at and we work with the builders. I know that it's a really nice-done community, but I can assure you that what we will do will exceed the quality of Shelton Square. And again, our goal is to continue to raise that bar.
Well, I'll make a couple of comments. One, I do like the area where you changed the orientation in the building and then created that more park space.
Yeah.
Because the biggest challenge for me is what Margaret Ann said, which is, you don't have a backspace for people to congregate.
Right.
And how do you have more, I mean, I know you're doing it for walkability, but people like to be outside, and people like to be able to congregate, and...
Right.
Some people like it private. So, this development doesn't have really a private space. And so that's the biggest challenge for me, is trying to figure out, okay, this is a different development, it's a higher-end development, but are we providing enough private space for them? And I do like it that you did put a more park area for these people to be able to go outside.
I think what, you know, what we've found with our consumer research, we do a lot of it, we use some of the best consumer research firms in the country to help us, asked us, David Weekly, this community is not for everyone. I mean, there are going to be the majority of people that say, look, I want a big backyard, I want the privacy of a backyard, I want my fence in my backyard. That's great. But there is a segment of the population that wants to live in an area where they can walk, where they can interact with their neighbors, where they have the ability to walk to the amenities of the avenue, where they can bike over to the state park and have all of that, and be more social, and live to the front porch. And it's not everyone, but it's a percentage of the population. And that's the buyer that will self-select into Clary Park, to the extent that they want, you know, a backyard with more space than they'll buy a house in Shelton Square or they'll buy a house in another community. This is for someone who wants a little bit more of an urban feel, they're willing to, you know, not have that private backyard space, to have the lifestyle that's offered here. So it's a segment of the consumer, you know, marketplace that we're looking to target. Not everyone, but those kind of quasi-urbanites that want to be in a more suburban location, Clary Park is going to hit that dead-on. And it's a growing segment. As the millennials get a little bit older, and they, you know, move out of living in downtown Nashville, and they no longer want the nightlife, but they love the walkability, they love the social interaction, you know, we see that as a key demographic, that young affluent couple, you know, that is looking to move to Murfreesboro, they're not ready for the yard and the burbs, but they love the concept of what we've got here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, and from the Planning Commission, or any other staff comments, or Margaret Ann, was there anything else, or Mr. Whitaker?
Take my name.
We're honored. Yes, sir. How are you?
Doing good.
Good. Thank you, Mr. O'Shea.
I would take just a few moments if I may.
Yes.
Members of the Planning Commission, it's been a while.
Absolutely, welcome.
This is kind of awkward. I actually had the first meeting, Walter, on this project some...
July of 2019.
19. When they first came in, and I just wanted to give the Planning Commission a little overview, not saying for against, but basically what was presented to us, and this is where it went to staff, it was a high-end project on this acreage. They showed us a lot of pictures. It had single-family, it abutted the Manson Pike, I guess, on the backside.
Wilkinson Pike.
And then it had brownstones, or we had actually talked about brownstones for the townhome section, and the numbers of the multifamily was lower. So, now what actually came to us was, in the world of multifamily, the single-family stand-alone. I know the townhomes are single-family, but the single-family stand-alone went away completely. I've met with Walter on several occasions. I've never changed my position. I've always stayed fast on my position. I did like the project when it first was submitted. It was true multifamily, had more commercial, it did have multifamily, but the brownstone, I thought, were a higher quality. If I could be critical, I don't feel, I mean, the gateway is our pride and joy. I don't feel that this, as far as the townhome product meets that. Now, that's my opinion. Naturally, this committee has the right to approve that, and I respect y'all's position. I'm just giving you my overview from start to finish. I have never wavered from my position. I have held fast to that, start to today. Not too long ago, Walter came back after it was denied, and I expressed the same concerns. We went from single-family, to brownstones, to what I felt was a higher end. Now, the market study may have shown that this won't, is not permissible here, won't sustain. I don't know. What I do know is what we were shown in the beginning, and I know what we have now. I'm not personally happy with the, I know they have done a lot of work, and staff has worked with what they have been given to work with, but that is, to me, far from what we originally started from. I felt this commission should know kind of the history. Again, it's your decision. I respect your decision totally. If it is approved, it will move forward to council. Even if it's not approved, it can still move forward to council. But I felt it would be remiss for me not to explain my position. And I didn't want somebody to come back if this gets to council and say, you came out of the left field. We're not. I didn't. And I'm sure Walter, if he gets up here, will have to admit, my position has not changed on this project. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, if there's any. If not, I'll go back to my seat.
Well, thank you, Mr. Whitaker. So, did you, you feel like we still have some work we could do on the quality... work we could do on the quality or in general, the townhomes?
I feel that the townhome product, in my opinion, from what I can see architecturally. And we expressed our, I expressed very clearly my concerns on architecture. I don't, and let me say that I don't have a problem with the concept. I don't have a problem with the use. I think we need residential out there. I'm a fan of that. The walkability, it needs to be the right project. This is the last, if you will, hurrah for that area out there, large landmass. There's one other, but who knows when that'll come available. But this is the largest landmass we got. This is the Gateway into our city, and this will be the first thing that you see when you come off that interstate as far as a residential multi-use project. So, to me, it's near and bigger. But to answer your original question, I would look at this, a townhome project, and I know there's been a lot of talk about wraparound porches. I would classify this with any other that we have in town. We have other quality projects that look just the same. Now, does this raise to the level of our Gateway? I don't think it does. And again, that's my opinion. And I have, I have shared that with the design team. I've talked, Randy has, knows my opinion. He's sitting right there. I have shared that with him as well. So, it's not, it's not been a secret, my position on this project. Not trying to kill the project, just want to see a quality product out there.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir.
Nice to see you again. Will you talk a little bit about what the brownstone vision was and the difference in what we're looking at and what you conceptually discussed and envisioned?
Well, you have an all-brick product, multi-story, and there, the architecture is something that you would see in Boston or if you went around to other large cities, you would see a lot of the brownstone product. And to me, it would fit in here well. You know, the vision of the Gateway are tall buildings, as we've seen, multi-story buildings, a lot of brick, a lot of masonry. You don't see a lot of hardy board out there. Most what you see is brick product. And when we talked about the original concept, they sold us on it. And it wasn't just myself, city manager. They had a meeting with mayor, city manager, myself. So, now, they hadn't been in subsequent meetings, but I have. And to me, it's just a different look. I'm not sure this is the farmhouse-type look that we had envisioned for this area. Now, I will compliment staff. I think they have worked diligently on this, and this commission has worked diligently to try to accommodate what you have been given. But in my opinion, it was not what we were told in the beginning.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions for Mr. Whitaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joining us today and being here, we appreciate it. Always good to see you.
Thanks. I may come back sometime.
Love to have you.
Well, I guess I'd like to respond, if that's okay.
Quickly.
Okay. I met first with Mr. Tyndall and Gary back in July of 2019, before we had the contract, the property under contract, and we talked conceptually about what this could be. I showed them examples of things that we've done as a firm elsewhere. We then met with the mayor, and then we put the site under contract. So, at that point in time, we thought, well, geez, maybe we can do some higher-density detached single-family along Wilkinson Pike because we wanted to be respectful of the single-family on the other side of the roadway. Well, then we negotiated a purchase price with Mr. Gatten, which resulted in a number that was two or three or four times what you would normally pay for single-family land. So, apparently, just not feasible to do single-family detached product in this location. We also talked about Henley Station, which is a brownstone. And I was told repeatedly by staff, "Do not mention Henley Station. It is not what the city likes. They don't like the architecture. Do not bring that product to Murphysboro," repeatedly. So, we went the direction of designing architecture that we felt was what we see in middle Tennessee, reflective of the area, and provides quality of product that is two to three notches above any other townhome community in Murphysboro. And I can walk through those, but I won't. You've got the package in front of you with all the examples that I showed you that. I have in front of me the package of information that I shared. We then met with the mayor in December, and we put together a vision for what this project would look like. And we described, the product I described to Gary about the detached single-family product was a project we did in Jacksonville, where they allow two-foot side setbacks between the detached units. So, we ended up with a mix of townhomes and detached townhomes that are all two-story. It's all single product, hardy-point product. It's higher density. It's 13 units an acre. We're at 10 units an acre here. Code in Murphysboro does not allow for zero lot line. So, there's no way to do that, to replicate that product because of the code limitations. I have the packages here. I'd like to pass them out to staff to show you the residential product that we showed the mayor in our meeting with Gary, with my attorney was there, Tom White, could obviously verify this, to be able to show you the product that we represented to the mayor when we met with him in December. So, second to the last page of this package. You know, I understand that everyone would like to see Berry Farms or West Lawn or West Haven developed here. The townhomes that you referenced in Berry Farms that are all brick, they're $100,000 to $150,000 more expensive than the townhomes are selling here. I mean, I think there is a market limitation on what can be done and still be demarketable. What we try to do is we try to design the best quality architecture we possibly can, push market pricing, but do it to a point where we still have a product that's going to be sellable. So, if you look into the second to the last page, there are the residential elements of our vision. There's two examples of multifamily. These are two projects that Heinz has developed, one in Atlanta and one in Jacksonville. And then there are three examples of the townhome product that we would propose. And I think what you'll see is it's very much in character with the styles that we've proposed with the three designs. Now, I'm sorry that Mr., I apologize, Gary, given you're listening. Sorry that we have a different vision for what that would be. You know, I don't think the all-brick, to me, that's monotonous. I look at one of the all-brick residential, you know, the multifamily communities that have been done in the Gateway District that are all brick, and I don't think that architecturally that is frankly of the quality of what we're proposing here. So, I think what we've got is a well-designed product. Again, you know, we've been designing and working with architects my entire career and developing product that you see that's, you know, in the slides that we presented today. We feel like, you know, what we're going to do for Murphysboro meets that standard. One other thing I'll mention, obviously, the community is gated. Once it's developed, you know, the only units that will be seen by the public are the ones, the 24 of the 160 units that front on Willow Oak and that. And, you know, we haven't designed the product for the other townhomes that front on Robert Rose. If it would make the commission happy and make staff happy, given that those front on all-brick product across the street, you know, then I think we would be willing to say that, okay, for the product that fronts on Robert Rose, given it's all-brick across the street, it's going to be three or four years down the road. Hopefully, pricing will increase, and we'll do, you know, all-brick fronts on those.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I have a question about phasing, real quickly. So, I'm looking at page 24 of the phasing plan. Phase 1, 2020 to 2025. When you get into phase 2, could you break down the Area 5 a little bit for me on what happens between 21 and 26, just specifically, because I'm happy to see it starts planned, is planned to start sooner rather than later, because the whole wow factor here is the
Right.
grand lawn. And so, you know, I'm just curious, the activity of completion, if that's phased within that phase at all, or if it's, will you not see the grand lawn until 2026, based on this?
Well, no. I mean, so, obviously, the phases are set up to where, you know, work is going to begin in there. What we're looking to do is begin the initial infrastructure, the two entryways and Clary lanes, so that we provide access into the community. And then, you know, within 12 months thereafter, begin the first phase of multifamily. And it should be an 18-to-20 four-month construction period. So, yeah, us too. I mean, the first thing we want to do is get the wow, get the great lawn in, you know, get the linear park in place. To us, that's the whole core of the community. And so, we want to get that going as quickly as possible. We just need to get some of the infrastructure and utilities in in the first year to then start the multifamily in the second year.
Thank you.
I wonder if it might be possible for us to consider either moving this to the end of the agenda to make whatever motion we're going to make, or to possibly make a motion to defer this to another meeting where we, it needs to be a meeting by itself. This obviously should have been a workshop meeting, and I want to apologize to everybody else that has been here for this length of time for a regular afternoon Planning Commission meeting. And maybe, I guess, should have gone out of the old Roberts Rules of Orders and put the old business at the end of the meeting, because I just do feel really bad at this point that we're taking a lot of time, and I'm not sure that we're close to resolving what we might want to do on this project yet, unless the Planning Commission members have something else or would like to make a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to do whatever you prefer, but I'm not uncomfortable making a motion at this point, and just to see where that lands. So, I'll make a motion to approve the project, all, subject to all staff comments.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. That motion passes, and we will then go ahead and thank you again for all your time. Thanks, everyone else, for your patience, and we'll move on to the rest of the meeting now. So, next is our consent agenda. I will read through those items.
Madam Chair, could we take a couple-minute break?
A couple minutes?
Please. Maybe even five.
Mr. Ives, Mr. Ives, and Mr. Jones, before we do that
Yes.
Could we get a clarification on what Mr. Martin meant regarding the subject to all staff comments?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, I'm not uncomfortable with the plan as presented, but I presume there are some technical things you guys would work through that, as we move forward through the zoning, that staff may want to make additional comments on. That doesn't mean that it does not support the plan as presented. I just did that as a matter of routine to say if there were something else you guys needed to do that...
Sure. And the reason I ask is because the staff comments are very clear about passing for the 18-inch.
Okay.
And the changes in translations. So, I think where we need clarification is, is subject to all staff comments, subject to what the requests that staff has made?
Sure.
And I, as the applicant, just stepped down. I don't know if he came back in. I think, I think he thinks, thought things were over. But I've got the same question, because obviously, we have a disagreement, which we have clearly communicated, that we feel, you know, that we've made a lot of headway, we've done a lot of revisions, but these are things that I think Walt expressed very clearly. He felt was important, and there were different reasons why he was doing what he was doing. So, our hope was that we would move forward with as presented, you know, with the understanding, hey, there may be some things. We know we continue to work with staff through the zoning process, but I think we would like a clarification on that, specifically with that.
So, I guess what I would refer back to are the developers' four main differentiating points related to the porches, as well as the foundation, enhanced elevation. And I'm not sure what else needs to be on that list. And so, this may be what Madam Chair was trying to avoid. Somehow, I've created a mess. But I'm okay with the porches.
Porches, patio, shutters, and the boundary with the held property. And then on-street parking, those were the things I was written down.
Yeah. So, specifically with the detail.
Four things.
Thank you, Mr. Ives.
Thanks, Jeff. That's for the same, that's for his response to staff's request on the floor.
Right. So, I'm through here. Hey, Margaret Ann?
Hi. Oops, sorry.
So, I'm okay with the 14-inch elevation, which is...
Mr. Martin, can you tell us what page you're on?
I'm on page seven of Mr. O'Shea's handout that he gave us.
I'm not looking for that.
Top of page seven, the finished floor elevation. We were talking about a difference between 12 and 18 inches. The developers proposed to do 14. So, part of my motion to approve was that we approve it at 14. Onto the enhanced side elevations, I think what we were talking about is accepting the presentation of the, I know this is important that we get it right, that Mr. O'Shea presented related to which exact units would include the wrap porches and which would not. And so, I'm okay covering the basis of what I think has been done, using the examples, the one he specifically notated in that, using those enhanced side elevations.
So, the nine and 10 units, the porches on nine units and shutters on 10 units?
Yes, without having
Page 38.
And no additional treatments for the rest of the development, the majority of the development?
There you go. So, I was looking for, yeah. Page 38. So, that as presented, enhanced rear elevations, you know, like I said, I do understand that. I think the concern was that we didn't have shutters on all rear elevations as well. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, the shutters were a small thing to add. Yep.
I'm okay not having those as presented. And then I guess the front porches versus front patios, to come back to that. You know, I think, again, the light coming in the front porches is a reasonable argument to that. And I think, seeing the pictures that I saw, I felt like the patio presentation was okay. So, it would include the developer's intention, what he's trying to do with grade, with patios, with rear elevations, as well as as proposed, the side elevations.
I did hear some questions. Part of my comment was, okay, the program book is the minimum standard, just the base bottom where you go from here. And something important to remember is it's not Walter O'Shea building these.
Right.
It's a program book. He's selling off property. Other people will be developing it. And as a department, we've discussed what's important to come up with these elements. So, we want to avoid a future situation where arguing with a builder about doing something. So, if you like the pictures that Mr. O'Shea showed you of the patios, I think this plan book needs to say, "Here's the starting point. It's this big. It's this wide. It's this material." You notice they weren't just brims swept concrete that he showed you. Well, most of what, I think, what he showed you was something homeowners did later. But if that's what you want, I think you have to put it in this minimum standard, because it's not going to be Walter O'Shea for this whole thing coming back to you, building this stuff.
So, these pictures that were presented and handed to us today become a part of this, I mean, this would be what
If that's what you want to see, I would suggest it become
The type thing I would be expecting
That's what I would expect as well.
You know, is what was presented here today.
As well as Jennifer's comments related to them being minimum dimension, six by eight or something, to be functional and useful.
I just want to make a comment. One of the reasons why I voted against this is because I wasn't sure we were all clear, and that's where we're, that's where we are. So, your comment with respects to deferring it and hammering these things out was the reason why I voted no. And I know we can't go back, because you've already voted, but I just want to make that comment.
Sure.
Mr. Ives, would it be appropriate, based on the new information, to re-vote?
It would be appropriate for someone who voted for the motion to ask for a re-vote or to move to reconsider.
Well, I definitely think we need a new, a clarification on the motion that we are voting on, because it was pointed out to us how terribly unclear it was. Excuse me, Mr. Martin.
Sorry about that.
I think the commission would be
And for me, for accepting it
I was trying to speak.
to vote on.
I was trying to speak to-
So, it's my fault, sir.
Well, this is a bit unusual in the amount of and substance of the staff comments. You know, as Mr. Martin said, our standard operating procedure is move to approve, subject to all staff comments, and everyone knows what we're going, and they're, they're normally somewhat details, but they're important, but we're a little over the detail. And with the additional discussion, I think it would certainly be appropriate for, if any of you who voted yes feel so, to move to reconsider and then re-vote. And if everybody's happy with it, then stay with it, with subject to the explanation. And I think it could be more clear though.
I do think we need to have a very clear motion in this case, because it is a huge project. We have spent an enormous amount of time on it, not only today, but for many months. Everybody involved has. So, it needs, we need to get it right.
Can I offer a clarification?
Let's just, let us see what we can work out, Mr. O'Shea, thank you.
Matthew? The patios, if we could make six foot eight with a paper material. Maybe that makes it clear, and then the other details are all asked per the plan book.
Okay, thank you.
Are we within, we have a time limit, a problem if we defer this?
You have two months from the public hearing to make recommendations to City Council, and so, they deferred it for, it's been a couple weeks. We, you have about a month and a half left.
Okay, good. I wanted to make, just want to make sure we worked on that.
Yes, no.
I've lost track of when we did what. So, I want to make sure we're not in a time problem. If the commission should like to do that, go that route, which would require a motion to reconsider and then a different motion. So, since I made the motion, I guess I'll just comment, and I don't know if I can be that person to amend the motion since I made the motion, so it's going to get confusing for me. But, the spirit of what I was trying to do, so that it's clear, is I'm comfortable with what Mr. O'Shea has presented. I know there are some discrepancies between what staff has recommended. If we need to get those specifically in a motion, I'm happy to do that again. I don't know if I can just do that by saying that, if I need to remake the motion to include all those things, or if what your suggestion is, someone else needs to do that.
I think the first, since there was a passed motion, I believe the first thing would be to, a motion to reconsider, then a restated motion.
Would somebody like-
Before we do that, I want to also comment, I think we're all just a little confused here, but, you know, we, we addressed the specific points that seem to be up for debate, and clearly have all kind of made our comments on that. But what I'm hearing is, it sounds like staff, in addition to that, has another list of things that you would like some more detail on within this booklet that gets approved.
I think the issues, would you let me go through them, just kind of maybe point by point, what I think they were?
I'm just trying to understand what-
There's no additional ones than what we presented to you today. We just, we're at a point that as a department, we didn't feel the applicant's plan really satisfied our goals in this area, so we wanted to be clear that the planning department can't be in favor of the plan due to those elements. There, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight of them, and then I heard a couple comments from planning commission. So, what I'd like to know is, reducing a few units and adding side porches, is that something that you want as well? Do you want specifications on the patios? I mean, I've asked for them in the past and not gotten them, and of course, I've wanted them. That is in part of what I've asked for, but they prefer to not do it at this time. And it was part of where I'm coming from, is I think probably Walter is a great guy, and is very proud of his developments, but I don't want to fight somebody else in the future. I don't want to have to argue over patty. If there is a minimum standard, I'd like for it to be clear in the program. These townhomes are not permitted by right in our zoning, so it's not like I have a clear path like I do with apartments, like I do with a restaurant, like I do with those types of uses. It's not as clear, because it's not what is anticipated here. So, when there are areas that I think are areas to improve, I'd like to just set a baseline. This, we like to set a baseline. The zoning ordinance says, this is your starting point. You can go above it, just like these number of units, this is the maximum number of units. They can always do less, but it's my experience when I'm not maybe getting those elements at zoning, I'm definitely not going to get them at site plan. So, it's, it's just, so when the builder comes in, we have the same program, we're starting from the same place. And so, that's why I would encourage details to be in there, like I've encouraged the depth and width of porches. I've encouraged those things to be a part of the plan. But, sure, sometimes you would always, you would have those in site plan, but this isn't something that we would normally see in site plan. Those villas that he showed you aren't even in the gateway, so that's not really an example of something developed in the gateway. I just want us to have the same playbook, that's all.
Sorry, Ken, I can't look at you right now to take whatever our next step is going to be. And one of the other three, would you like to have a motion that we, have a clarifying motion? In other words, take kind of a step back from the motion we just took and, and let Mr. Martin make another motion with quite a bit more clarification in it, that either we all agree to or we don't at that point.
I'll move that we restate, or reclarify the motion. And I'd like to make a comment here. One is, when we state subject to all staff comments, the problem is, is their staff comments and what they want to do is in conflict.
Right.
So, we are definitely going to have to be clear that their staff comment is not in it, and this staff comment is in it, so. Is there something else?
So, is that a motion to reconsider?
Yes, that is a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider. Would there be a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Salas. So, we have a motion and a second to reconsider our prior motion. All in favor of that, please state aye.
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 Any opposed to that? Okay, thank you all very much, and we will start over again. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry for the confusion. I will make it, make a motion, let's see if I can do this here. I will make a motion to approve, and I'll be specific on the, some exceptions that staff has noted and that the developer has addressed, the developer has addressed. I will make a motion to approve based on allowing porches and patios and not requiring porches on all units that match the, basically, diagram on page 38 as the developer has presented in that motion, and also make the motion to approve a 14-inch elevation rather than our staff recommended 18. I'd also recommend that, that all the, if I'm reading this correctly, all the sta, all the side elevations are not required to have wrap porches, again, report, referring back to page 38 in the plan book, and that the rear elevations are not required, that all the units and rear elevations are not required to have shutters, only those presented, again, referring back to plan 38, or page 38 in the plan book. And I guess since we're doing this, also to include the white fences that we discussed as part of the buffer. And I'm happy to pause, is there anything else that staff feels like is unresolved before I stop making a motion?
Parking.
Okay.
Do you think it's evenly distributed or not?
And I'm willing to approve the parking as presented as well.
Mr. O'Shea made a comment with respects to a minimum size of the porch. Do we want to address that as part of your motion?
Sure, I think that makes a lot of sense. So, I think we talked about a six-by-eight patio, and I don't know if it's possible for us to use the diagrams that we have.
They were pages 24 through 30, no, 24 through 27 on the, on the handout we were given today.
You can ask them to put, put that in the PRD book, the UD book.
So, we'd ask for that to be put in the PRD.
Become a part of the plan.
Yes, we would ask that.
Okay.
Anything else, Margaret Ann?
Aye.
Do you want to address his comment on the units that front the other development of making them all brick?
Oh, where he was offering to do a brownstone-stone type development on Area 7, because most of these comments are specific to Area 5, and what is on the screen before you, and I think he had mentioned the possibility of doing architecture that's more in line with, like, so that fronts Robert Rose Drive, that is brick, and it's more of a brownstone-type development. I think if you think of, like, but not exactly the boulevard, those townhomes behind the boulevard, those are really narrow, but that would be that style, I think, that Mr. Whitaker is addressing, where it's very traditional, stately, masonry, brick, frustrations. So, he offered that at one point. I don't know what your opinion is about it.
I, I think it's difficult to do that without something in the booklet that sets a precedent. It's, it's very hypothetical in my mind. It's just my thought, my immediate thought. If we're being specific for, I mean, that's a broad statement.
Yeah. Right.
So, based on that comment, I will not include that in my recommendation, my motion. I appreciate the help here. Is that all of my motion? I think that's all of my motion, unless Mr. Hall-
Yeah, I don't have, I'd just like to make a comment. I think, Mr. O'Shea, this planning commission is working with you as much as possible. I think staff has worked with you as much as possible. You made the comment, even though Jennifer's got a good comment that it's too broad. I would hope, in the action of working with everybody, that we can try to make something look nice on Robert Rose. I mean, you already made the statement, so if we can try to work that in at some point, I would hope you do that, but I'll second your motion, Ronnie.
Thank you.
So, we now have a restated motion, very detailed. Thank you, Mr. Martin. And a second, Mr. Halliburton, thank you. All in favor of this motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret Ann.
And we will take a resess and come back. Yes, thank you. Okay, if we can get started again. Everybody back? Okay. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Now, how many items there are, but this ought to be easy, okay. First, we have Waits Creek Crossing, Section 1, Phase 1A, final plat for 18 lots on 3.82 acres, zoned RSA Type 1, located along Asher's Fort Drive, O'Brien Lloyd Venture Developer. Item B is Waits Creek Crossing, Section 1, Phase 1B, final plat for 12 lots on 2.93 acres, zoned RSA Type 1, located along Asher's Fort Drive, O'Brien Lloyd Venture Developer. Item C, Sheffield Park, Section 4, Phase 2, final plat for nine lots on 2.75 acres, zoned PRD, located along Rose Gold Court and Dizzy Dean Drive, Vizier Homes Corporation Developer. Item D is Evergreen Farms, Section 38, preliminary plat for 174 lots on 55.37 acres, zoned PRD, located along Pearlino Drive and Secretariat Trace, Old South Properties, Inc., Developer. Item E is Redeemer Academy, re-subdivision of Lot 1, final plat for one lot on 20 acres, zoned CF, located along Old Salem Road, Redeemer Classical Academy, Inc., Developer. Item F is Caroline Farms, Section 2, final plat for 50 lots on 11.92 acres, zoned PRD, located along Caroline Farms Drive, Caroline Farms, LLC, Developer. Item G is Crossings of Three Rivers, re-subdivision of Lots 8, 15, and 21, final plat for six lots on 0.57 acres, zoned PRD, located along Hospitality Lane, Three Rivers Rutherford, LLC, Developer. Item H is Carlton Landing, Section 1, Phase 1, final plat for 12 lots on 8.46 acres, zoned RS10, located along New Salem Highway, Cornerstone Development, LLC, is the developer. Item I is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of an existing sanitary sewer easement located along East Vine Street and First Avenue, Huddleston Steel Engineering, Inc., is the applicant. And item J is Panda Express Site Plan for 2,300 square foot restaurant on 1.02 acres, zoned CH, located along Memorial Boulevard, Panda Express, LLC, Developer. Would anybody on the planning commission or the staff like to remove any of these items for further discussion? And if not, we're ready for a motion.
I can motionally approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, next we have our Gateway Design Overlay. Two items there today. First is Commons at Gateway, Valvoline, initial design review for 2078 square foot motor vehicle services on 14.8 acres, zoned MU and GDO 1, located along Medical Center Parkway, Valvoline Instant Oil Change Developer. Welcome back, Ms. Green.
Thank you very much, planning commission. Good evening now, I guess. Next item on this agenda is for you to consider initial design review for a project located within our Gateway Design Overlay District, GDO 1. This is initial design review, so we ask that you focus on the architecture and provide any feedback that you may have regarding the architecture. Of course, if there are any site layout feedback you'd like to give us at this point, that would be great. Site plan review comes with final design review, which will be when this application comes back before you. And as you mentioned, this is for proposed 2,000, about 2,000 square foot motor vehicle service. It's a Valvoline, to be more specific, and it's located within a master planned development called Commons at the Gateway. The Commons at the Gateway development was developed without property lines, except for the Liberty Financial on the corner. So, this master planned development consists of two lots, and it does meet that definition that we have of mixed-use development with a portion, 25% of the land used for apartments, and the remaining properties being developed for commercial purposes. To date, we have on the property a three-story self-storage facility, 204 apartment units, 17,000 square foot L-shaped retail building, and they're proposing to develop a portion of the property here, and as, as such, aren't, aren't designing it with property lines. This is a condominium form of ownership. So, you can see on the image, it's an ortho image, it shows that L-shaped building I just referenced. There is a property line along the eastern side, which is to the right of the screen that you're looking at, and that is with a commercial strip center that has firehouse subs, if you're familiar with that. There is an existing right-in, right-out here, and just further, further along Medical Center Parkway is a signalized intersection to get into the site. You can see the northern portion of the disturbed area is a private drive. On the north side is where the apartments are, and this town, this Valvoline, will have access to that shared access drive. Some of our comments initially, when they first reached out to us, were that we have, of course, an elevated design standard here in the Gateway. We require more than just the minimum for landscaping, and of course, architectural design. And one of the elements that we routinely enforce is that we don't want those overhead doors facing our Medical Center Parkway or streets. It's not a corner lot, so they were able to orient the building so that the drive-through overhead doors face east and west and don't face Medical Center Parkway. That was a little bit changed to typically how they liked to design their building, but they did that. They also treated the, the shorter elevation is the front that faces Medical Center Parkway, and it looks like it's two-story. It's not two-story, it's a single-story building, but that was just to add some architectural interest, break up the typically rectangular shape of this building in these type uses, and, and an effort to meet our guidelines and standards. One of the comments I initially made was that the front elevation did not project as a predominantly brick-stone or rock building, which is our standard. It needs to be predominantly brick-stone or rock. And so, their solution was to extend the hot lasters on the corner with brick, and so, the change from when I made that comment to now is the brick on the second-level portion of the front, the sides and rears are all brick or stone, and they are using a, a rock stone base and light buff around the entire development, and they have a material board that Mr. Taylor is going to bring- and they have a material board that Mr. Taylor is going to bring up to show you the various colors proposed on the building. The various colors seem to be somewhat consistent with our standards here. They did treat the entrance and exit to the drive-throughs with a stained concrete so that you don't have that discoloration that you might have on concrete or asphalt, and it provided a separation and decoration element there, because you can't have those foundation plantings where we would ordinarily expect them. At this time, I'm going to invite Matt Taylor to the lecturn to present the project to you. Representative of the owner is here this evening, and the architect is here as well. So if you have questions from them, they'll be glad to answer them. And again, this is an initial design review.
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Green, Chairman, Chairperson, Chairwoman Jones. I plan to be much shorter than the previous.
Thank you.
The, we are here, as Ms. Green said, to present initial design review of the Valvoline on the last remaining parcel or piece of property that we initially called the Womack Property. That's located to, just beside of the Firehouse Subs or directly across the street from the new racetrack. And so we are proposing a three-bay Valvoline quick oil lube change location. As Ms. Green said, one of the driving factors of the design was to flip the building so the doors don't face Medical Center Parkway. We also had to push the building significantly, a significant distance off of Medical Center Parkway because of the TVA easement that goes through there. That's pretty consistent with all the master plans that we've had, because we've known about the easement. So we've got that as close to the street as we can and still make the site function. The building itself, as you'll see on the material board, it's all, it's got a stone base by a brick middle, got some ephes on some accents of the building, and then have a shingle roof. So, and then the bay doors are not a solid door, it's a decorative glass door. So we do have regional stormwater that's already accounted for on the project, and the dumpster enclosure is of similar design to the building, so they'll all be cohesive. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I've also had the architect, as well as representative from Valvoline, here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Taylor? Or any of the design team? Anything else for Ms. Green? Comments, questions, and/or motions?
There are no more comments. I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments, Mr. Halls.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Next, in Gateway Design Overlay, we have Puckett Creek Station, Lot 5, initial design review for 6,103 square foot office on 0.83 acres, zoned Commercial Highway and GDO1, located along Cedar Glades Drive, Regionwood LLC, Developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you again. This next item is for you to consider initial design review for a new office building to be located along Cedar Glades Drive. Cedar Glades Drive comes into Fortress Boulevard and eventually will connect into Manson Pike. It's the road that runs just south of the Walmart Neighborhood Center and north of the Sonic on Fortress Boulevard to help orient you to the site. The proposed location is adjacent to Camino Real, which is also a good landmark in our community. The property, of course, is zoned CH, Commercial Highway District, and is located in the Gateway Design Overlay District 1, GDO1. The proposed building is 6,100 square feet, so just over 6,100 square feet, and the anticipated users are mostly medical offices, although various offices could fit, could go into this facility. It is designed so that the, it is designed so that it could be multiple tenants or maybe tenants taking up large space. There's a similar building to this one, located off of South Church Street, behind Sonic there. And so if you're familiar with that area back there where we have some offices, then there's a building that looks almost identical. This one has had some tweaks to achieve our standards in the Gateway. The base here is a stone base, and so it does have that minnow and 24-inch stone base that extends along the front sides and rear. The roof is a pitched roof, and it's very reminiscent of traditional office buildings or residential-type development. The structure itself is about 29 feet. It's a one-story building. As I mentioned, the precast is the base. The body has brick, and the gable roof is used to help break up the building. There are two elements, two entrances are defined with arched openings that change the roof form and help address what could be a very roof-heavy building. And part of my comments were to show that the body of the building is at least 50%. Our design guidelines have the base being a portion, the roof or cap being a portion, and the body needs to consist of 50%, and that is to ensure that you don't have buildings with very short walls and out-of-portion roofs. Not to discourage a style like this, but just making sure that they incorporate that. So with the face of the brick and excluding the base, they have been able to meet that standard of more than 50%, or 50% or more of the building being the body. The, I think the, there's a material board, I want to pass it around. I haven't yet reviewed it, but I anticipated these colors being Arton palette, Arton colors that fit within the palette in this area, so there is a continuous theme in this overall development. This commercial development is called Puckett Creek Station, and this is Lot 5 of Puckett Creek Station. And like I mentioned, it has a Walmart Neighborhood Center. It has a Sonic, a Camino Real, Car Wash, and some strip centers there as well. What's different from this master planned commercial development and the one that we just discussed is this one's zoned CH, so there's no opportunity for residential here. There is Panther Creek Apartments adjacent to the property, but this master plan development doesn't have the same guiding principles that a mixed-use development does, because the base zoning is different. At this time, I'll invite Matt Taylor to the lecturn. The architect is here this evening, Mr. Scott Wilson, and I'm not sure, oh yeah, okay. And the owner is here as well, if you have any questions from them.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I believe Ms. Green did a good job explaining the project. I'm not sure I can add much. We do have a tenant already signed up that is medical in nature. They would take the eastern or left side of the building if you're looking at it from the street. We will continue the same streetscape pattern that's going through there. We'll be constructing sidewalks, lighting, street trees. And then we've also, we have one entrance on to Cedar Glade. I think that Ms. Green did a good job describing the building. You can see it's all brick-stone, so very nice building, well-defined entrances. So myself or the architect will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor, the architect? Sounds like you were lucky. We used up all our questions earlier.
If not, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, moving on to plats and plans. First item is Hidden River Estates, Section 1, master plan and preliminary plat for one lot on approximately 12.4 acres, zoned PUD, located along Case and Trail. Hidden River Holding Company, LLC, is the developer. Mr. Ware, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. So this is the first preliminary plat for the Hidden Rivers Estate subdivision. This is a master plan review and preliminary plat review. If you, if the planning commission were to approve this today, this would permit the developer to submit construction plans for the first phase of Hidden Rivers Estates, and staff recommends approval if you approve, subject to all staff comments for this plat.
Okay. All right. Any questions on this plat?
Is there a way to get it on?
I guess if we don't, if you don't have it on your iPad, you're not really seeing.
Mr. Ware, could you page down to the master plan? Ms. Jones and members of the planning commission, I would also mention that staff has reviewed this for consistency with the approved, the approved plan development. Now, there was a lot of discussion when that plan development was before you and before the city council, and so staff has scrutinized that. I did also want to mention that this, as the preliminary plat is just for the public infrastructure, there will then be a site plan which shows the actual private development that will occur. The preliminary plat is just for the public infrastructure, and so there are two sections that are being considered today in addition to the master plan. And so it's, what you're seeing on the plan before you does not show all the detail that would have been in the pattern book, because a lot of that detail will be on the site plans for the, for the private elements. This is just for the infrastructure, the public infrastructure, in order to move forward with developing property.
So this is the master plan and preliminary plat for one lot. So is there like an actual one on this whole plan somewhere that's one lot? Or is the one lot this entire master plan? Are you saying the one lot is the infrastructure?
The one lot for, for the first phase is the area located directly to the north of Case and Trail, and it is going to be all townhomes, no public streets. And so this, this phase is actually just for the utility, Section 1 is the utility infrastructure. And, yes, there we go. So Section 1 is just this one lot directly to the north of Case and Trail.
So that's Section 1, not Lot 1?
Well, Section 1 is Lot 1. There's just one lot in Section 1.
So we're approving the master plan and the preliminary plat for one lot, known as Section 1, on this 12.4 acres.
Yes, ma'am. It's the, it's the area in the bold outline on the plan that's on the screen right now.
Yeah. You know, I'm big on these plats. If you have a one lot, there's usually a one with a circle around it.
Yes.
And that's what's, you know, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here.
Mr. Huddleston is taking note.
The circle is around the Section 1. Got it. Okay. How many questions?
I think there are no other questions. I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments, even though that got me in trouble last time I didn't, so.
I don't think any of our staff comments on this one are in conflict, in conflict with what Mr. Huddleston wants.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So next, we have Hidden River Estates, Section 2, preliminary plat for 18 lots on approximately 39.6 acres, zoned PUD, located along East View Drive. Hidden River Holding Company, LLC, is the developer. Mr. Ware?
Yes, ma'am. So these are for single-family detached homes, 18 lots of record. They also, this is in addition to the townhomes there to come later, but this is just for the single-family lots in that subdivision. Like I said earlier, this is, this permit the developer to submit their construction plans. Mr. Blomley said we have reviewed it against the plan, the plan book for the subdivision. We recommend approval, subject to all staff comments.
Okay.
These are deep lots.
Yeah, very deep.
Mr. Halliburton, these are for the, those estate lots that, there weren't going to be a whole lot of single-family detached homes in this development, but these were going to be those estate lots that back right up to the, right up to the river. And it is one of the few areas where there are, where there are public streets as well.
So you mentioned East View, which is further south on the plan, but it's not within the parameter of what we're talking about right now. Is that correct?
It is.
It is.
It is. This section, in addition to those 18 lots, has that public roadway that, that will connect to the existing East View stuff.
Okay, that was what I was wondering about.
They're, they're calling it, I think, Parmley Street or Parmley Drive, but I think we'll have to look at, to see if it warrants a street name change there, or if it is more of a straight shot to continue that East View Drive street name.
Because it says Rockwater Lane.
Well, Rockwater Lane is the street that intersects with the extension of, of East View.
If you'll speak the numbers.
The existing lots, 236 and 237, are existing lots in that neighborhood, and that's where East View Drive dead ends now. So that connection where, that, is it, is the extension of East View Drive.
Okay.
If that gives you a little bit of bearings on where you're at.
Yes, and so, but then our 18 lots that we're looking at here are on this?
Yes.
Rock whatever, Rockwater Lane.
That intersection comes up just a little bit north of this page, and then it comes around and loops back around here, and that would be that Rockwater Port, I think.
Yeah.
That, that master plan that's on the screen might, might orient you, just know what you mean.
Yeah, so here's the existing neighborhood, and then this is East View, this will be, this is where East View Drive connects, and then here's the single-family lots.
Okay.
Got it.
And then these will be the, this is also a part of this one as well, isn't it? They'll be the duplex units that'll follow with the site plan.
I believe so.
So this is Hidden River Estates, Section 2, preliminary plat for 18 lots on 39.6 acres. Okay?
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion we approve, subject to staff comments. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's all our plats and plans. Thank you very much, Mr. Ware. Under new business, we have five items. First one is a zoning application for approximately 1.23 acres, located along the east side of Gresham Lane, to be rezoned from RS15 to CH. Tony Emanuel is the applicant. Miss, no, not Ms. Kerr. Hello, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. First of all, I'd like to say that our thoughts and prayers are with Ms. Kerr right now. She lost her mother-in-law last week, Ms. Juanita Kerr. The visitation and the funeral were today. Her mother-in-law, of course, being the mother of Mr. Jim Kerr, who's the city's transportation director. So our thoughts and prayers are definitely with Jim and Amelia and their families on the loss of their mother. So I wanted to, wanted to say that, and I'll go ahead and present this for Ms. Kerr right now. This is about 1.23 acres located along the east side of Gresham Lane. It's the area colored in red on the map before you. It's part of a parcel that has frontage along Gresham Lane, and it is directly to the west of the Mulch Company. So if you know where the Mulch Company is located, along Agri Park Drive, it is this L-shaped parcel right there. Mr. Tony Emanuel with the Mulch Company approached staff, along with his engineer, Mr. Bill Huddleston, about-
Mr. Bill Huddleston, about needing room for expansion. And he was looking at this property to the west of his, of his site for possible expansion. Zoned RS 15 right now. A minimum commercial highway zoning is needed for, for a lawn tree and garden service. And so in brainstorming with the applicants, at this point, the vision that, that, that staff and the planning department has for Gresham Lane, particularly this section of Gresham Lane, you'll see, I think there's a little bit of a different dynamic on an, an item on the agenda, a little bit further down the agenda. But in this particular instance, we feel that, that Gresham Lane is not necessarily ready, this segment of Gresham Lane is not necessarily ready to see commercial development fronting on it. But the, but the property is large enough to where it can be split, and enough land for a residential lot fronting on Gresham Lane. The, the property is a, is about two, two and a half acres. So Mr. Emanuel will, would, if this zoning goes through, buy the back portion of this property for the expansion of, of his development, which would leave room for a residential lot along the frontage of Gresham Lane. So it's just the back, 1.23 acres is being requested to be rezoned to commercial highway. They've requested rezoning. We would recommend a public hearing date of October the 7th for this rezoning request. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Bill Huddleston, representing this application, is in the audience if you have any questions for him.
Is it currently vacant?
Yes, I believe there was a house on the property at one time. It's owned by Mr. Dennis Dietz. I don't know what happened to the house, if there was, but it's, but it's no longer on the property, so it's all, it's all vacant right now. And I'll show you the aerial photo. Directly to the north is also zoned RS 15, as is the area to the south. Across Gresham Lane is county single-family residential development. Further to the north is the Vintage at Blackman apartment development, and the 555 Gresham Lane Townhouse Development. Directly to the north is a single-family parcel, but I believe there's also some type of commercial activity. If you can see this area in the, in the rear, there's, I don't know if it's a contractor storage yard, but there's some type of activity there that appears to be a little more intense than a traditional single-family lot.
Hi, thank you. So we need to set a public hearing for October 7th if there are no questions from Mr. Blomley?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blomley. Next, we have a zoning application for approximately 12.56 acres, located along Christie Knob Way, to be rezoned from CH to PRD. Cannonsburg Townhomes, PRD. Celebration Homes is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. So this project site is located along the east side of Christie Knob Way, at the east tribunes of Tiger Hill. It is a 14.6 acre parcel, of which 12.56 acres is proposed to be rezoned from CH, Commercial Highway, to PRD, which is Planned Residential District. The remaining two acres would stay in the CH zoning and would be creating two out parcels for future commercial development. Celebration Homes is requesting this planned development in order to allow for the development of 68 townhomes, which would be at a density of 5.41 dwelling units to the acre. The reason for this request for the zone change is because the topography of the property, this is probably one of the highest points that we have in Murphysboro. Tiger Hill is a very steep slope, and commercial development is not conducive on, on such a topography. With the townhome development, they are proposing to step the building pads into the grade so that it is something that's more conducive with, with this particular site. Adjacent zoning to the north and west is Commercial Highway. Northeast is RM 16 and Planned Residential District with townhomes on it. Properties to the south and east are still in the unincorporated Rutherford County and zoned RM. And property to the west is Zone CH, recently received site plan approval for a racetrack gas station. And then across Shelbyville Pike is also commercial zoning. So the plan development book is proposing that the units be approximately 1,700 square feet. They would have garages. They're proposing amenities, including walking trails, be made of masonry. They are asking for an exemption from the front yard setback from 35 feet to 25 feet. Staff feels the 25 feet is adequate for, for a car to be parked in the driveway. According to the applicant, the request is due to the highs, due to the slope, and this being one of the highest peaks in the city, and this is what they feel is the, the best direction for this particular site. Staff has been meeting with the applicant for probably about six months, and we do concur that this is the appropriate land use for this particular area. And that's due to the, the apartments to the north, townhomes to the north, the steep slope and topography would not be conducive to really any kind of commercial development. There has been a response from water and sewer, that they do have the capacity to accommodate this particular project at this site. The request today is for the commission to schedule a public hearing date. Staff is recommending October 7th to be that public hearing date. And SCC Matt Taylor is here to answer any questions, and I welcome any questions from the commission as well.
Okay. Any questions on this application?
Never thought this parcel would be developed.
Oh, no. Where are we going to go sledding? Only the old people in the room would remember that.
Exactly. If there are no questions, I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for October 7th.
Thank you, Mr. South. Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is a zoning application for approximately 1.0 acres located along Gresham Lane, to be rezoned from CL to PCD, Secure Lawn, PCD. Mark Lewinsky is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. As indicated by Mr. Blomley a little bit earlier, this is the parcel that we were talking about, that is further north on Gresham Lane. It is in an area that is surrounded on three sides, northeast and south, with the Agri Park property, Lane Agri Park property. Across the street to the west is a commercial piece of land in the unincorporated county of Rutherford, and it is the Honda overflow parking lot for their inventory. So it is a, a commercial use at this time. For those reasons, staff felt that, that a commercial rezoning from residential RS 15 to a commercial PCD would be appropriate. The applicant is requesting the rezoning so they can establish Secure Lawn, which is a lawn maintenance facility or operation at this site. They would occupy the existing structure on the property, which was a residence, and convert that into an office use. So that conversion would require the ADA accessibility, some improvements to the exterior of the site, as well as landscaping. They would also have to put in a commercial parking lot and commercial driveway to accommodate those uses. There is an existing shed on the property. They were going to store some of their equipment in there, but eventually they would like to build a new shed that would replace this one in the back of the property where they would store their equipment and any materials inside. Mr. Clyde Roundtree from Health and Steel is representing, but I think he passed the baton to Bill, and he is here today to answer any questions. Staff is asking for this item to be set for a public hearing of October 7th, 2020. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Ms. Rush or Mr. Huddleston?
If none, I will move to set a public hearing for October 7th.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Our next item is a zoning application for approximately 12.8 acres, located along Veterans Parkway, to be rezoned from CH to PRD. Sullivan's Retreat, PRD. Cornerstone Development is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. The subject property is located along the east side of Veterans Parkway, just north of Franklin Road. The property is identified as a 12.78 acre portion of a 15.6 acre parcel. So a portion of the property would remain in the CH zoning, and the request is for 12.78 to be rezoned to Planned Residential District. The purpose of the rezoning is for the development of 80 townhome units. This would be at a density of 6.26 dwelling units to the acre. The surrounding areas are primarily commercial to the north. You see a CF zoning district, Commercial Fringe. That property has been approved for a self-storage, has site plan approval for it. The properties to the south is the grocery store Kroger and Zone CH. Properties to the west is a veterinarian clinic, and I believe a doctor's office or a dentist's office, and those are Zone CH. To the east is the creek. And then further to the west across Veterans Parkway are kind of larger parcels in the unincorporated county, and those are zoned RM with single-family residences on it. The Planned Residential District Program Book is proposing that the homes be approximately 1,350 square feet in size, include one-car garages, constructed of masonry materials. They have common areas and amenities, private streets. According to the applicant, the request for the rezoning is because the project site has limited visibility along Veterans Parkway for commercial development. The future land use map for this site did identify auto-urban or commercial for future development. The rezoning of the request would not be consistent with the future land use map, but if the commission does decide that it wants to support that, then it would need a, a land use map change. The concerns that we had with, at a staff level, was that the surrounding properties are commercial. This would be a residential use, almost completely surrounded by commercial. It would not be consistent with those types of uses. This is in an area that is impacted by the sewer. There is some capacity issues within this particular basin. So although this would comply with the sewer ordinance, it would exasperate the situation within this basin in itself. Staff has also talked to the school, and the schools that are, the elementary schools that would serve this area are near capacity right now. That would be Salem and, I forget what some of the other ones were.
Overall Creek.
Overall Creek is what this one would be served, as well as Scales and Salem Elementary. All three of them are near capacity. So the applicants represented by SCC, Matt Taylor's here to discuss the project. We are asking for this item to be scheduled for a public hearing. The staff report did reflect December 2nd. We would like to bring that into October 7th if, if that's suitable with the commission and with the applicant. Set that for a hearing date. I can answer any questions, if you want to ask any questions about staff's comments or Matt Taylor about the project itself.
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, you want to make any comments if we're especially going into this with possible?
I am happy to.
Positive recommendation from staff?
The, we feel like the project, even though we have commercial zone into the north, the back of that property is currently for a self-storage, so it's a very quiet use. And so we, we don't think that's impactful to the residential at all. Matter of fact, I think they complement each other very well. As far as not being in compliance with the land use map, I think you can look at this particular map and see there are several things that have already been changed. Land use map calls for the self-storage site to be a multifamily residential. That obviously has been changed and decided against. So we think that due to the depth of this lot, you can see where our residential portion starts is actually behind the front of the Kroger to the south. It's just such a deep parcel right there, the visibility is almost zero on the road. We have left the portions that we think are very viable commercial on this property, such as the out parcel that directly fronts of Veterans Parkway, and then we've left a sizable two and a half to three acre piece of property at the front of the townhouse piece to be commercial highway. We think that both of those are realistically very viable commercial pieces. This back here, we do not believe is. That, that's the reason for the request. So as far as sewer, whenever we read the comments, it seems that there's a study that should be done to determine the amount of uses in this basin. If we're to do that, I'm happy to do that, I just need to know the limits of where I need to study. So I just need a little more direction on that, I think. I don't know that I could solve the school issue, but I think any residential project will have some impact on the schools. So other than that, I'm, we're, we're happy for the October 7th and happy to answer any other questions. A couple of things to clarify, we do have one and two-car garages. All of our end units are two-car. The interior units would be single-car. This is the exact same architecture that we used at the Joby Jackson Townhouse project there at Manchester Highway. Matter of fact, they're just now starting to go vertical on those, so I don't know, I don't think they're far enough along to get a sense of the elevations, but they are very attractive townhomes. These are all for sale. They're not rental. And we've put in a fairly robust amenity package for the number of units we've got here as well, too.
Matt, hit on a little more just why you think it can't be commercial? I mean?
I think for the, for the depth of the parcel, that's part of the reason. On the one down south of town, behind the Walmart there, it's so far off the road. You know, I think when both of these were zoned commercial, the market was probably a little different. You know, something this deep, you would really demand that it be a big box?
I see.
Type development. And yeah, I think the big boxes occurred here, being the Kroger. There's not another grocery that's going to go right beside a Kroger. The big boxes, you're probably tired of hearing us say that, but it's just kind of the reality of where the market has went the last several years, and appears to continue going that direction. So by all means, the commercial would definitely be more valuable to my client or the seller. It's just not, it's just not there today. It hasn't been for several years.
Just make a comment, too. There's a parcel on 231 that's kind of tucked away. It's a retail, commercial development on 231 that's tucked off of the road, that's got a long entryway or longer than normal entryway to this. And I know they struggle to have tenants, because if cars can't see the storefront when you drive by, it, it's difficult to know unless you just, unless it's a destination, so to speak. It's hard to see it back there. So I mean, I'm not necessarily advocating for, you know, the, the townhouses, but I would, I would have the comment that I'm not sure Commercial Highway is the right, or Commercial Use is the right use, so.
Yes, sir.
From a practical standpoint.
If there are no other comments or questions, I'm gonna make a motion for a public hearing on October the 7th. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our last item is a zoning application to amend the planned signage overlay district zoning for St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital for approximately 70.7 acres along North Thompson Lane, Medical Center Parkway, and Gateway Boulevard. Ascension St. Thomas is the applicant. Ms. Stevens, hey?
Good evening. I'm Teresa Stevens, the city sign administrator. Today, we're looking at application to amend the existing, an existing planned sign overlay for St. Thomas Rutherford. The zoning ordinance allows for planned sign overlay districts in keeping with the promotion and protection of public health, safety, comfort, and convenience standards set forth by the city, and to permit the use of new and innovative signs on large atypical developments. The city encourages the design and development of signs that are, that are of higher quality... The city encourages the design and development of signs that are of higher quality than would be under the sign ordinance, and to promote aesthetic and architectural improvements in the total planning of large land tracts. Also to promote signs which are compatible with their surroundings, and to provide an option to the existing sign ordinance. The subject property is located at 1,700 Medical Center Parkway, and is approximately 70.71 acres along North Thompson Lane, Medical Center Parkway, and Gateway Boulevard. The property is zoned light industrial, and is within the GDO III overlay. In 2008, the hospital received approval for the planned sign overlay district. Anytime there is a request for change in existing PSO, an amendment to the PSO is required. Amending the PSO must be approved by the planning commission as well as city council. In addition, this property is located within the GDO III overlay, and must receive approval from the design review committee meeting, the designs, development guidelines adopted by the Murfreesboro Gateway Property Owners Association. The proposed changes to the PSO were approved by the DRC on August the 4th at their regularly scheduled meeting. The hospital is requesting amendment for rebranding of the hospital from St. Thomas Rutherford to Ascension St. Thomas Rutherford, and to increase the visibility of building identification signs. A few of the changes include building identification signs for the three buildings on the property, rebranding from St. Thomas, from the St. Thomas Cross to the Ascension Trinity with the A in the center, the addition of a freestanding sign in the garden at the front of the hospital entrance, and the rebranding of the freestanding wall signs throughout the property. I believe you have the plan book submitted to you, and if y'all have any questions, just let me know.
Okay.
Also, we have the applicant in Ascension St. Thomas, Representative Denise Simmons, here with AGI available to answer any questions. After questions, staff recommends a planning commission public hearings date be set for October 7th.
Okay. Any questions?
Ms. Jones, I will be abstaining from this.
Okay, we'll have one abstention.
Please for a public hearing, October 7th.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention.
Thank you.
Okay, that includes our new business. Under staff reports and other business, we had one item, and I believe it has been withdrawn.
Yes ma'am, that's been withdrawn by the applicant.
By the applicant, perfect. And do we have any other staff reports or other business? Anything? All right, thank you very much, we stand adjourned.